Tammy, you're still muted.
There we go.
Okay, I'll go to public comment. Public comment is intended for, to address the commission items that aren't presently, aren't on this agenda. And as such, we can't take any kind of an action on any item that's brought up in public comment until it is agendized. Do we have any public comment?
I don't see anything.
Not seeing any public comment. We're going to move on to approval of the minutes. We don't have any minutes, I don't believe.
We do have one set, yes.
Twenty eight.
Which one is it? Yeah, it's February seventh of twenty two, our last meeting.
That was this one, okay. All right. Okay, we have one set of minutes that was presented to us. That's February seventh, twenty twenty-two. Everybody have a chance to look at that? Got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for, for, what day, was that?
It was February seventh.
For February seventh, as presented.
A motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. We'll move on to item five, which is approval of expenditures. I had the expenditures in front of me when I sat down. I have not had it, I haven't looked at these yet, but I have the others that were emailed to. Everybody have a chance to look at the expenditures?
I haven't signed them.
I haven't signed them yet. Okay. You have any, have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the expenditures for the period of February seventh, twenty twenty-two, and February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the expenditures from February seventh, twenty twenty-two, to February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous. Okay, item six, Treasury request that personal property taxes be deemed uncollectible.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commission. Rhona Leckemary, Humble County Treasurer. I'm before you today to request that some personal property taxes be deemed uncollectible. This is for property account LI fourteen oh nine. Commissioner Haas pointed out in my staff report, I did label it fourteen oh six in one area, but it is fourteen oh nine. And the total amount is two hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. All appropriate collection procedures have been followed and have proven unsuccessful and have been delinquent for three years or more as designated by NRS three sixty-one dot five six oh seven.
Okay, everybody understand the request? Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that, that we deem uncollectible. Property taxes for account L one fourteen oh nine is uncollectible per NRS three six one point five six zero seven. Personal property taxes owned by Floyd Lynch on account L one one four or LI one four oh nine in the amount of two hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, move on to item seven, which is an update from West Coast Salmon, Nevada. Representatives of West Coast Salmon will be, provide an update on the recent activities. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Ralph Rung, Vice President Development, West Coast Salmon, Nevada. Appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update here. I think in your briefing packages, there was a copy of a press release for West.
Ralph, would you move that mic a little closer to you?
This one?
Yep.
Okay, is that better?
You bet, thank you.
I think in your background packages, there was a copy of a press release where we announced we've signed a technology contract for the recirculating part of the system with PR Aqua, which is a company out of Vancouver, British Columbia. Important milestone for us. This allows us to begin to go out to the financial markets and raise financing, Ukraine aside. So we are out actively right now, working on raising a tranche of financing, which will get us through completion of the design phase and also break ground. The, the contract and with some of the, I guess, pandemic-related issues, we're a little bit behind the schedule that I told you about four or five months ago. We're probably about six months behind the schedule, so we're looking at breaking ground in, in Cosgrave there, probably in the August timeframe to try to beat the cold weather. The, um, the new technology itself is a little bit more modular than what we were looking at in the past, so it allows us some flexibility on the construction, the operability side. So we're still hopeful that we can get our eggs in, in the first half of twenty twenty-three and have our first harvest by twenty twenty-five, because we can get the eggs in even though we're still constructing in other parts of the facility. Since I last spoke with you, we've successfully gotten all of our change apps through on our water permits, so we're set on the water permit supply with DWR in the county. We've got our package lined up with Nevada Energy in order to get electricity to the project. We'll start executing that project once we have the financing. So I'm pretty good shape to get going here. We've, as I said, begun design, still looking forward to beginning some excavation work in August timeframe. With regards to local things, we expect to begin staffing the project probably late Q two, early Q three. Our objective remains the same, to try to hire out of communities as much as we can where there's qualifications. We've begun working with Great Basin College to put together some programs on aquaculture to help kids and other people be more qualified to work in the, in the facility. Initially, we'll have a, you know, a couple of RAS experts and fish biologists and people that know salmon in, but the idea is eventually we'll train people locally to do that as those people phase out, so it becomes much more of a local workforce. Continue to work closely with Jan and the RDA on housing and manpower issues. They've been very supportive and, and there's lots of programs, as I'm sure you're aware, that to try to improve the housing situation. And of course, we want to be a part of the solution there. And that's about it. And in terms of contractors, we'll continue to try to source locally too. And that's really where we're at. Any questions?
I had one.
Sure.
Jump right in there. You mentioned that you had been in touch with Great Basin College for, looking for, developing a workforce for this. I would offer to you as well, through Nevada Works, the joint office here in town is actually has, is, I'll be, they'll be very interested in trying to develop a program as well for people.
Yeah, it's been a while, but I did meet with them one time, and I'll circle back.
Yeah. I, I think this is a great timing, from a timing standpoint, it's a good opportunity to do.
Right, and there's quite a bit of training involved in this. So I mean, we've got quite a bit of lead time to get people on board and get them trained before we actually put eggs into the facility.
Sure enough, yeah.
Any additional questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, thanks for the update, yeah, it's nice.
Thank you, and we're still excited, very happy to be here and looking forward.
Well, the community's excited as well, so we're glad to have you.
Break some ground.
I can't tell you how many times people have driven by that Cosgrave off-ramp and gone, salmon, I can't believe that, right down there.
It's gonna happen.
It is, that's great.
Thank you so much.
Exciting, yep.
It's good.
Thanks, Ralph.
Okay, um, we are going, let's see where. You know, item eight is the comptroller financial report, and this followed right behind the audit report. I think we can do the comptroller's report, financial report first. However, if it's okay with you guys, I would like to hold the, item nine, the, the financial audit, until Commissioner Tipton is able to get here this morning. He's got an appointment he had to get to. He expects to be here about nine fifteen, nine twenty, somewhere in there, so I'd like to hold that item. I'd like to have him on, on board before we start that, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning Commissioners. I don't really have too much of an update. I figured that you guys were going to have a pretty full day of financials before you between the audit presentation and then the budget workshop this afternoon. So everything's going fine as far as working with our departments and the special districts on getting budgets in. They're starting to come in, we're hearing some great questions, so feeling real confident that we'll have a good session there.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and hold item nine. Dave, did you contact Andre and let her know that we're gonna?
Yeah, I think Gina did, yeah.
Okay.
She's aware of it, they're actually here, but they're aware of it, so.
Okay. So.
So we need to move to twelve.
Okay, so item nine is the McDermott, is the GID report as well as, and then item ten is, is the other, is the remainder of the county. So.
Item eleven is that public hearing, so we'll have to wait till ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock for the public hearing, okay. They're with me here. Okay, item twelve, this is item, this is the approval of attorney Steve Balkenbusch as a temporary county employee. Consideration discussion, possible approval to hire attorney Steve Balkenbusch for, from Thondrell, Thron, Throondall, Armstrong, Delk, Balkenbusch, and Eisenberg. And then a minimum of eight hours to meet the requirements of public employees retirement system to be vested. Mr. Balkenbusch worked for approximately seven years for two government agencies in this early career, however, was never vested due to the fact that it required ten years at the time there, for vesting. That requirement has been reduced to five years by the state legislature some time ago, and the only requirement is that he must work one day with an agency to qualify. Mr. Balkenbusch has agreed to review and recommend our language for the county ordinance dealing with nuisances, and I think we talked about that when we were going through that nuisance ordinance and whatnot. I asked Dave to put this on there. I wanted an opportunity for everybody to have an opportunity to take a look at what we're doing here. It's, everybody has been contacted on this. District Attorney took a look at it to make sure that was, was appropriate. Pers is on board for it, they understand what is being done there, and it's just nothing more than an opportunity for us to help, help Steve Balkenbusch out with regard to being vested, and he's coming up on his retirement right now. He is, on the other side of that, as you can see in our, in the staff report, we're gonna get quite a bit of work out of him for that eight hours, and so it's not like we're giving anything away. And it's just an opportunity for us to, to thank an attorney that has helped us through an awful lot in his years with, he was contract lawyer with Pool Pack with us as well for a lot of years. So he, he's well, we know him well on this board from, from years ago. So if there's any questions on that, this is, anybody have any questions about a motion?
This Commissioner Hill, yeah, I just, I have a question on it. So he, he's not gonna get Pers retirement unless he puts in one day to vest himself?
Well, it, it, it's a technicality for him, because he already has, has the time in. He had to work one full day, eight-hour day, for a public entity in order for, to activate that five-year provision for the years that he'd already put in for. I think he had, what, seven and a half or eight years?
Yeah, seven, just shy of eight years.
Just shy of eight years, so it was ten years to vest when he first came on, now it's five years to vest, and so just the, there's a technicality, he has to have one full day, eight-hour day, in order to be able to exercise the, the five-year option. So it's just, this is just an opportunity for us to, to be a part of that, helping him out. And as I said, Commissioner Hill, I, I, we had this in front of our district attorney to take a look at, make sure it's appropriate, had it in front of, of Pers, so that we didn't, I didn't want to give them the impression we're trying to slide one in on them or anything, and they're, they're fully aware of it. It's, it's not that outside of, it's not, it, it's fairly routine since they changed that requirement for vesting.
It just seems to me that when he did his tenure, it was ten years, and now, now it's changed to five, so shouldn't it still fall under the, you'd still have to put your ten years in, since that's when he put his time in?
No.
Unless I'm misunderstanding.
No, he had, when he started with the state, it was, it was ten years for, to vest.
Right.
Since then, the state has changed that requirement to five years. In order for him to, to be able to take advantage of the five-year vesting, he has to work one full day.
How long has it been since he's worked in a Pers system?
Many years. It's been twelve or fourteen years since he was in. This is a legislature issue, you know, they had a ten-year vestiture provision, and then they changed that to five years. And then I'm assuming that somebody was affected, like Steve Balkenbusch was, somewhere down the line, they went to the legislature, and so they changed that rule so that you could get your, get vested if you already had more than five years. I'm not sure why they didn't just automatically say, if you had seven in and, or more, if you had more than five, you, you're automatically vested, but I think, you know, instead of opening up the floodgates, it's kind of, again, saying this in a public meeting, it's kind of quiet, they don't really want you talking about it. We, when we followed up with them, they were kind of like, well, we don't really want to publicize it. But the fact is, is now the legislature changed it so that if you petition for that, work one day, you get vested, like you had five years in, or like you had, you know, like you meet today's requirements, I guess is the way, best way to put it.
Any additional questions?
I'd just state that my comfort level on this is better now that I know that he's actually not just, we're not just giving him eight hours.
No.
And he's not doing anything, he's gonna donate his time to finish some work.
He's actually given us more than eight.
Yeah, to help us with this, get this ordinance.
Yeah. Written up. You remember Steve Balkenbusch, I mean, he helped us quite a bit, so. And I'm, my comfort level as well, I, I wanted to make sure, you know, obviously, that under some counties and whatnot, because it was under, under the minimum amount, we could have, the county manager could conceivably have cut that contract and actually, or, and asked him to do the work. But I felt my comfort level, I, I asked the questions, because I, I think you guys have asked the same questions, you know, and I felt comfortable about it, and I wanted to make sure I got it in front of you, so you understood what was, what was being done. Okay, we have a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Steve Balkenbusch for one day as Deputy District Attorney in the District Attorney's Office at an hourly rate of forty-one dollars and six cents per hour for eight hours for work performed on updating the Humboldt County's nuisance ordinance. And to afford Mr. Blank, Blankenbusch the opportunity to retire with Pers pension for previous public service rendered to the state of Nevada its corresponding political subdivisions.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we're, we're two to two at this point, because we don't have Ken here.
Yep, so I would say table it, and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Dave, there's a, there's a word in Mr. Blankenbusch's explanation that says he will, I looked it up in the dictionary, it says he will go back to school, so we need to look at that and get a better explanation of what he's talking about there.
You remember the word exactly? Could you point that out?
It had to be the T. That's all I can say.
Okay, yeah, show, show, show me that at some time, I'll look at it, so.
Okay. You show me the letters, you know, I can pick it out for you.
Sure.
Okay, so is this something we want to, if we, we've got something we need to clarify for Commissioner Haas, something we need to put on a table list for the next meeting then?
We can, we can table it, and you can bring it back up later in the day if you want. If Tipton's here, he will have obviously read the same material you, you did, so you can do that at that time.
Yeah.
Or we can table it for another meeting.
Okay. Abel, do you have something to offer?
I do, just to add a little more detail, Mr. Balkenbusch has actually been working on the nuisance ordinance, and he did provide some figures, and I think the deal that the county's getting is pretty, pretty good. So I had him, I asked him, would you, would you please price out the work you've done so far and give us an amount, like if you were actually doing it, being contracted by the county? And so he's actually put in about five thousand four hundred eighty dollars worth of work towards updating the nuisance, and he's actually delivered a draft to me and Wendy for review, and it addresses all of the concerns that we have, you know, getting it out of the public, public and into an administrative process that is overseen by not a county employee, but an objective individual that's investigated through a code enforcement officer that's appointed by the county, either an employer, however that would work. So he's, he's put in the work, and I think that for, for eight hours, it comes out to be like three hundred odd dollars for him, that the county's really getting, the taxpayers are getting a really great, great deal for it, so I just wanted to inform you of that.
And I just, I would just add that, you know, we had used Balkenbusch as well as some other private attorneys to do just exactly that kind of work, you know, to review, and, you know, I'll just point out the, the last set of ordinances that we actually started drafting for our water management plan on our master plant. We actually had Schroder Law out of, out of Oregon, who was actually did that workforce, and Balkenbusch has actually provided that kind of workforce before. This, the only thing different about what's happening right now is that we've, we've allowed him to, or we're gonna actually formally hire him this time as opposed, so that we, he can get that, that eight-hour requirement to get his, as opposed to, you know, to get his Pers that he's earned, by the way, by the way, he doesn't get paid for anything but, you know, but the time and service that he already has in. So, anyway, I just, I think that's, I think we've taken this as far down the road as we want right now, we'll go ahead and, and, you know, I think I'll table this for right now, get this, get Commissioner Tipton here, I think we'll bring it in toward the latter part of our, of our meeting and, and open the door up again for it and have another discussion on it then. So.
There's no action.
Yeah, no action now.
Okay.
So we'll go on to item thirteen, which is detention center approval renewal dietitian agreement. Consideration discussion, possible approval of detention center dietitian contract with CB Nutrition Dietitian Counseling Services for one year in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Humboldt County Sheriff Mike Allen for the record. And as the Mr. Chair indicated, we are here to request to enter into a contract with CB Nutrition Dietitian Consulting Services. This is for our inmates to ensure that they are receiving the proper nutrition while they're incarcerated in our facility. So with that, I'll open it up with any other questions. This is not to exceed five thousand per year each visit or time we have, it's, is it a hundred dollars?
Yeah.
A hundred dollars per, per hour to, to work with us. In the past, we have used some other services, and this person has been with us for a couple of years?
Yes, this has just been the third time in the contract.
You gotta state your name.
Captain Chris Linder for the record, yeah, this, I believe will be the third, if not more, years that we've used their services for the.
That goes back quite a while, though. We, I remember Gene Farr used to provide those services, I'm not sure who's doing it now, but, or going to be doing, but it's, it's part of the work program at, at the jail, for sure.
Yep. Yeah, there's always been a dietation, but with the CB, the, this company, I think this is our third year, as far as I know, it could go back farther too, but.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So is this a requirement that we have, a state requirement, that we have a dietitian on staff?
I believe so. I'd have to look in the statutes, because we have to provide proper meal formulations for special needs, religions, religious diets, I eat diabetics, things like that, and we don't have a certified person to do that. Our cook is certified and safe-serve, to be able to serve safely, but he's not, doesn't have a degree in this field.
So we could have a liability if we didn't have a, probably a dietitian on staff to make sure that.
That's what Gene Farr told me about it, was it was mainly for those inmates that have special diets, especially medically required special diets.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is it the same price as we've been doing?
Yeah, there is no change in the contract this year.
They are changing it?
No, there was no cost change in the contract this year.
Thank you.
Okay.
This Commissioner Hill, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve a contract between Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, the jail, and CB Nutrition Dietitian Consulting Services for one year, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item fourteen, W C B A.
Mr. Chair, before you go on, Rick's here, you guys are good. Rick is here, Kim Peterson is not here yet, we were calling him, I'm, I'm assuming he thought we would take longer to get to him, so maybe we can just go to, to this next one. Although Gina, was Reese gonna be here? I thought Reese was gonna be here. Yeah, maybe he is, I don't see him on here.
Is this item fif, this is item fifteen?
Yeah.
Let's, hey, Rick. On your mark.
Hey, Rick, before you leave, I gotta give you my computer.
Yes.
No, that was one of the things Tammy mentioned to me on my.
Okay.
Way over. I'll just unplug it and give it to you when you leave.
Okay.
Okay.
Give it a doctor's appointment.
I'm sorry?
It needs a doctor's appointment.
Yes, she, she explained to me what was going on. Good morning, Commissioners, real quick, this contract is basically a project that the technology department took over a couple of years ago, and it is, it was a very overwhelming project. We have well over a hundred computers right now in Humboldt County. The logistics of trying to make every one of them more expensive than on that network.
You mean a hundred print, well over a hundred printers?
Yes.
You said computers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure.
Got a lot of things going this morning already. Yes, well over a hundred printers, which is fairly high for a normal standard of printers. This contract would basically reduce our number of printers at a starting point. The idea is, we know what we need in the immediate areas, we would start with this, then we'd work with the department heads. If they're requesting more printers, then we would work with Reese Keener through the contract, and add more printers to the contract. We have roughly around ten departments requesting printers right now, that we've been actually holding them off on, because we're trying to get this contract where everything is, is supported under the contract. We do know in the past, one company just failed in giving us the support that we needed. When we got involved in this, there was more than one contract, we'd always under, understanding that there was one contract for all printers, that was not the case. So we're actually now trying to wrap it all under one contract. We did reach out to another vendor, which was OPI, several times, and no response from them every time that we'd reached out, which surprised us. Other than that, I'm not sure if Gina had anything to add to this contract. It will be a little bit of a savings. On the backside, that's, that really would do is the savings on the technology department. By every one of these printers connected to the network, they'll upload to a central location, say, okay, hey, I'm, I'm running low on a cartridge, you know, notify this agency, and then they'll just send us extra cartridges. We plan on keeping some stock in hand down at the professional building, and some over towards the other end of the, the city. That way, if something comes up, we can actually just swap it out really quick.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I want to add a few things. So this actual agreement with Alliance Imaging out of Elko, Reese Keener, of course, is the president of that company, started three or four years ago, and it came through our BERC, which is our budget expense review committee, and that effort was at a time when our revenues were quite a ways down, and we were concerned about every dollar. And so we looked at different ways, and we, we really felt like printers was one area where we were spending a lot of money, especially on toner cartridges and, and those types of things. So we looked at this, we engaged with Alliance Imaging, and there was a big plan at that time to consolidate all of these printers, and, under one contract, as Rick said. It, it didn't work very well, primarily because, and I think it was a combination, our IT group that, which was fluctuating with people, you know, we had quite a bit of turnover back then. And then the other part was, I think Alliance Imaging bears some responsibility as well, because, you know, while they did do some things, I don't think they followed up very well, and so we've had a lot of discussions with them on that front. They now have engaged Xerox Imaging, they originally had hired a company, I think they were out of Boise, and they just did not do the job in terms of servicing our, our stuff. Everything from not, you know, taking a long time to get here, and then when they got here, they didn't have the right parts, and things like that. So since about July of last year, Xerox has taken over full responsibility, they've got a regional manager, Mark, I forgot his last name, is out of Sacramento, most of the guys come out of Reno, and since that time, it's been much improved. We've still had a few printers where we've had some problems with, we haven't been able to, you know, to get up and running the right way. So the real goal this time was to say, okay, guys, if we're going to do this, we, we can't have a hundred and twenty-three printers, when we only have, you know, two hundred and ten or twelve employees, that doesn't make any sense. So, so the bottom line here is, we're going to make a consolidated effort to take the total number, which is about ninety, that are under the current agreement, and get that down to forty. So it's a major undertaking, and we're going to start taking printers out of it, and try to make them more centralized printers, which will save us on a lot of money, just on toner cartridges, things like that. The other part of it is, is if everything's on the network, it's constantly being monitored by Xerox. And when they see the machine itself, they see the toners down, they ship, the replacement toner arrives about the same time that, you know, you get a warning that it needs to be replaced. So, and I know for me, and for, I've talked to quite a few people, Gina actually did a survey, too. You know, there's a few areas where they haven't done very good, we haven't done very well, and we've got to be better on that front, and I think Reese understands that. But, but generally speaking, those people that are on the real system, they're connected to the network, really have had no issues, and they, they like the system. So that's the whole idea here. I'm not completely, I, I'm, I'm not convinced that we're going to save a lot of money, I think it'll be less, but I think where we're going to save the money is on the back end. Because right now, our, our guys in IT are having to have at least some knowledge, you will be able to go to a website, if it's a break-fix issue, they have to go, get online, and go find the model that we've bought, which we've got, I don't know how many, ten, twelve different companies that provide them, and then amongst those ten companies, they might have two or three or four different models in each of those. So all these drivers, which is the key to a printer, are different, and so it just makes it very difficult for us to support the printers. Because a lot of times, that's first line, right? Somebody calls, they put in a ticket, our, our guys check on it first, see if they can fix it. And then if not, it'll, it'll go out to the network, to Xerox, and then they'll launch somebody out to help. So I think it's a good program, if we can do it the right way, it could be very beneficial. But we haven't done that so far, and that's been a frustration.
And the other thing I'd like to add is, during the deployment of these new printers, we're only going to do so many in one week. So I think there's like ten on the first week, eleven, then eleven, then ten, and so on. So we're going to stagger it out throughout the month, and the idea is, Xerox will be here on site, they set it up, they get it printing, they plug it into the network, my staff take, you know, looks at the keyboard, accesses it through the network, and gets it all operational. So it'll be, actually, the, the head-end work will be actually done by Xerox.
Do we have a, do we have a plan in place right now to centralize the computers, and actually pull us back, pull us down to that lower number of computers that?
You mean the printers? I did say, sorry.
Yes, you know what I meant.
Yeah.
Is there, have you guys had a chance to sit down and try to centralize that, then?
Yes, we, we have spreadsheets after spreadsheets on everything that's out there, and then what we're going, actually going to.
Okay.
And that's why I said the first deployment week will be ten printers in, in various locations, and the second week will be ten more. We had to spread it out, because there's just no way we could undertake this large of a project, and just do it all in one week, it just, and we may even have to spread them out in between, add another week in between, just don't know. We'll find out the first week and see how it goes. Still a little shorthanded, so we'll do the best we can.
So from what I see right now, this, we're going to save some money on the front side, we're going to save some time on the backside, and we're going to improve efficiency and, and the amount of time that these, that these printers are up and running.
That is the goal, yes.
Okay. I think that's, I think that makes sense.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I got a couple, three questions. So who actually owns the printers?
Will be leasing them from Xerox on the contract, yes.
One, one of the things that makes me a little bit apprehensive of this, is it says approximate amount. Why can't, you know, if, that we're going to be approving five thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-one cents, but it says approximate?
Correct, that one of the goals is, is we, we started out with a certain number to deploy, and if Gina comes up and says, hey, you know, I need another printer here for a lot of high-end printing on this, then we need to add to that, which will increase the contract. So it is going to be a little bit variable on, depending on, probably for the first year, I guess.
Thank you. Gina, I'm actually comfortable, for purposes of the record. Also, the other reason why it varies is at the end of each quarter, after we know the actual imprints, then there's the, a quarterly charge for the actual copies that are, or print jobs. So that's why that number also varies.
Yeah, and black and white is much cheaper than color, so one of the goals is to have the machine make the, the personnel answer multiple questions to print a color copy.
So we get so many black and white, so many colored copies.
Under the.
Under the.
Under, right, but if we go over.
Anything over that, we have to pay some extra.
Correct. And one of the things that we did discuss with Reese, and I can't remember the lady's name, that we can keep track by department through this contract.
This is Commissioner Hill, I just have a question also.
Go ahead.
Oh, so essentially, we're cutting our printers in half, and for close to the same money, maybe a little bit of a savings, right?
Yes.
So what, what keeps us from three years down the road, having a hundred printers again, at, at this new cost?
Well, the goal is, is that we've been tossing around in our department, is we wanted to sort of create a committee, to see if it's justifiable, and just to make sure that we are keeping it trim, justify, for the department head to justify, fill out a form, and whoever else is on this committee just takes a look at it and says, okay, it's justifiable. It, it will be a cost savings. Yeah. Because right now, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I can add to that, too. So historically, what we've done, and I think the DA's a great example of that, is if somebody wanted a new printer, because that cost of a printer, especially if you're talking about a printer that's a large centralized printer, it's, that's a cost over five thousand dollars. So that will come before the board, and I think that's another way we've done it in the past, and I'd like to see us continue that. So if there's somebody wants a new printer, again, there's two issues. Number one, if it's just an add-on in your department, and you don't want to have somebody walk ten or twelve feet, then that's probably not justifiable. But at the same time, if a department head or an elected official wants to come before the board and say, hey, we need it, and here's why, and here's the justification, let you guys make that decision. And then, you know, just the fact that somebody knows they got to come before the commission to justify it, plays a big part in it, because, you know, you're going to have to do your homework, and if you feel strongly enough about it, then great, let's put it before the board.
Yeah, it was just a, Commissioner Hill, again, more of a clarifying question, you know, Rick, I'm going to have to trust you on this, that you're the expert in this, and if you think this is a good move, and we'll save a little money, and actually make things function and, and work a lot better, then, then I'll trust that.
The, the amount of support that we're doing right now, and the inquiries we get about printers not working, the whole goal is to reduce our workload also, because it, that's sort of like a hidden cost, that, that doesn't really show up. And that's the other thing that we're trying to prevent, or reduce, I should say.
Okay.
Is it perfect? It's closer.
Well, I think ultimately, too, it, I'm thinking about it from the standpoint of the efficiency of the project, program. I mean, when, when a, when a printer goes down, you guys get a ticket on that thing, and you're pulling up the internet, trying to figure out what, what the drivers are, whether or not it's a part that has to be ordered and whatnot. The bottom line is, is that when you've got that many different brands and, and types of printers out there on the ground, what you end up with is a hodgepodge spaghetti bowl full of printer parts and drivers, that ultimately, when something goes south, it, it's down for a while, because, you know, it's not an efficient repair, you know.
Correct.
And, and, and the other thing is, when toner is gone and whatnot, you've got to order more toner, or, in this case of, in the past, you're ordering a lot of toner, just so that you don't run out of it, and it dries up, and goes south on you. So it, having a, having it online, and having the ability for Xerox to know when they've got a machine that's either malfunctioning, or is, is, needs some maintenance, or needs some supplies, they're on it, you know, and if, as long as the contract, they, you know, they fulfill their end of the contract, this, I see this as being a positive. On the flip side of that, and it comes back to a question I think Commissioner Hill asked, is that if, perfect, in a perfect world, the, the county grows over the next forty-eight months that this contract is for, and we end up with a hundred and forty-five printers, again, just from need standpoint, let's just say, perfect world, what i, is the cost of running that same number of printers under this contract, more or less than it is right now?
The reason we shortened the period of time is because, right now, we're dealing with, I don't have a crystal ball. I could tell you that within four or five years, things are going to be changing, a lot of differences. Microsoft in itself, with all the updates, it, it could break a single printer, or a half a dozen printers. Then we have to go reach out and get another driver, get that driver, if that driver will work, if not, we have to get multiple drivers.
Yeah.
It, it's, I don't know the answer to that. The, the goal is, is let's run with it for four years, take another look at, see what happened over the four years, is there a better way to resolve this? There might be. Just have to take another look at it.
I think four years is, is a safe bet, you know, honest with you, and it gives us the opportunity to see whether we like this contractor, to see if we like this product and whatnot on the other end of it, see if the services that are being advertised are, you know, are legit, you know. I, you know, I think it's Reese Keener, right, out of?
Yes.
Of Elko, that's, I've known that family for a long time, they come from Winnemucca, so they, I have a high expectation that, you know, they're gonna, that they're, they're going to do what they say they're going to do, so.
Mr. Chair, Reese might be on telephone, Reese, are you out there?
As a matter of fact, I am, Mr. Mendial, and, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my apologies, I'm in, calling from Valmy, and I, I had anticipated being there, the, I, I thought this item would be heard after the public hearing at ten AM, so, again, sorry that I'm, I'm not able to be there with you in person. I've heard about the last five minutes or so, the last ten minutes, and a few of the things I just wanted to hit were, one of the things that will be happening, as, as Mr. Grantham might have mentioned, we're, right now, there's many, many different makes and models of equipment, this will allow for a lot better standardization, and thus, Xerox will be having both a parts and supply cache there in Winnemucca to help maximize uptime. The, the forty-eight month, I, I always recommend no longer than a forty-eight month contract for two reasons, for reliability and technological obsolescence. As Rick intimated, things can change a lot over the course of a few years with Microsoft and different operating systems. And a lot of the printers that you have right now are too old to support some of the remote services for the, you know, for the signals that go out if there's a problem with the fuser or low toner. And from the get-go, everything with the new equipment will be network-connected, if there's not a, a network drop there, it'll be connected via Wi-Fi. And then, another question that came up earlier, is there was some discomfort with the, the monthly cost, you know, as an estimate. Every, there are some devices that are being traded in that have balances on them, and every month that, that we wait to initiate this contract, another payment's made, so the balance goes down. So if we stick with the agreed-upon configuration of devices, that, that monthly cost estimate will be less than what's published.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah, Commissioner, this is Commissioner Chair. So, Rick, I assume that the money we're now spending, wherever, will now go towards this contract, so you've got the money in your budget for this now?
I don't believe it's in my budget.
It's spread amongst everybody's budget, everybody's got a line item for printing, so.
And that will remain, that one will come out of the IT budget?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
You know, if you look at the fiscal impact portion of our, of our.
Excuse me, that's incorrect, we have a business machines line item that all of this is paid. We have a business machines line item that all of this is paid out of in one place, in one of.
Okay.
That's the same, it's the same.
It's in the budget.
Same number.
So Gina, it's in the budget? Okay.
Yeah. If you look at this impact portion of the manager's report to us, they're anticipating an approximate $2,600.
For the first week in March, question mark, should be the March 4th and can come during.
I don't know who's on.
Jen, you might want to, there you go, thank you.
Any rate, I see it as a net gain to the county, and I also see it as a net financially, but I also see it as a net, I see it as an improvement to the, you know, getting the product on the other end, so I'm in favor of.
Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Hill.
Actually, hang on one second.
If I may make a comment, I am one of the departments that's waiting on a new machine. Our copier has, gosh, it's been, it's not that it's broken, but it leaves black streaks on everything. Xerox been here a few times to fix it, and it can't, so we are anxiously awaiting approval of this so that we can get our copier replaced. But if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to address a comment that was made in Mr. Keener's report, that it was unlikely that the Treasurer's Office had received the wrong parts, the wrong toners. And I just felt like I wanted to clarify, there's two occasions where we did receive the wrong toner. We worked directly with Xerox. We didn't, I guess maybe we were supposed to go through Mr. Keener's office, I don't know, there's an 800 number on the sticker on the printer, so that's the number that we called. They did airship us a toner back in March, March 23rd of 2020, and then there was one time that we had to go down and get the correct toner from Humboldt Printers. The last time we got a toner, we did get the correct one, so that I think it has been resolved, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hill, I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we enter into a contract with Alliance Document Technologies for Print Devices. It's a 48-month contract, not to exceed $5,543.71 per month. This is pending the DA's review and approval.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Discussion on the motion?
Yeah, so he put a "not to exceed" in there.
Yeah, it's an approximate, it's an approximate number.
Yeah, it's approximate.
I think as long as we ID that as an approximate number based on the number of copies that are done, it could be less or more than that.
Yeah, you might want to just amend that motion to say, depending upon usage or something like that.
Commissioner Hill, again, I will amend that motion to include approximately $5,543.71 for the reason that depends on how many copies are ran per month, could exceed that by a little bit.
One thing, who's going to fix these?
Xerox is.
Xerox is, and everything that you're going to deal with will be Xerox from here on out for a while?
Xerox will do the hands-on, physical work, but if there is a network issue, our department will take care of that. So a department will still put in a ticket, and then we'll work with, directly with Xerox. If we cannot figure it out, then we'll work with Xerox, call Reese up or his team, and say, hey, we got an issue on this printer, let's get it resolved.
And so Reese is backing that as for Xerox, then, basically?
Is.
Sir, well, his service manager, or whoever we're dealing with. Okay, thank you.
If I can mention, if I could just clarify something, Reese Keener, for the record, the, all of this equipment's being acquired under the NASBO agreement, and the, and that's the official state contract that's used for acquisition of Xerox devices, and there are service-level agreements in there that guarantee your satisfaction, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that that's in there as an extra guard, an extra protection for your investment.
Okay, thanks, Reese. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Kinda.
Okay.
We'll see.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any additional discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna.
All right, thank you very much.
You bet. Sorry we got started early, but today's been kind of, kind of a crazy day for us, too.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Let's see, we're going to go back to, we've got a public hearing, 10 o'clock. I think what we'll do is to do the public hearing at 10 o'clock, and then I think we'll follow that by item 10, which is, be item, item nine and 10, which will be the presentation from Drake Rose and Associates for the McDermott General Improvement District and for Humboldt County Audit Financial Report. Okay, we only got about five minutes, so maybe we take five? Anybody need to, five minutes?
Sure.
What's that?
Nothing, I was just wondering, because it's 9:25, so do you want to get something done?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was five minutes. It's all right.
That'd be a long break.
Yeah, that'd be a long one. I said five minutes, but let's go ahead and, I think we're going to need more than, we're going to definitely need more than 30 minutes for Andre.
Yep, we may want to just go on and either, one of two things, go ahead and finish the rest of the agenda here, which are some letters and different things, and then we can come back, if you want, to the Balkan Bush thing, since Commissioner Tipton's here now, or any order like that.
Kim's here, too.
Oh, that's right, Kim's here, let's go ahead and get Kim.
Let's get Kim, Kim's already gotten here, let's go ahead and get Kim straight away.
He's such a small guy, I missed him out there.
Yeah, right, he slipped in here.
You guys are moving fast today. It's going to slow down. Is it? Well, good, thanks for sneaking me in real quick, I appreciate it. Kim Peterson, Ag District 3, I'm here this morning, good morning, by the way. I am here this morning to obtain, hopefully, board approval for the bids that we received on for Slurry Seal at the fairgrounds. We have three parking lots that we are hoping to do. We had 164,000, wait a minute, we had 145,000 in our budget. Unfortunately, the lowest bid came in at $164,007. That's $19,007 over our budget. However, because of the fact that with Gina's help, we were able to get some of the COVID funding to cover one of our major projects we were doing out there, the restroom shower unit that was 275,000, we were able to secure the funding for that, so we do have some funds in our budget because of that to cover the override of the $19,007. As I'm sure you're aware, any of you that have been out there recently to any of the events, not only is the crack's getting bigger and the parking lot is in need of seal coating, the parking, the striping for parking is almost nonexistent. Matter of fact, this weekend during the basketball tournaments, people were triple parking, we had to make announcements to people to move their cars so others couldn't get out. So it's also a safety issue in the way they get blocked in, and we can't get, you know, fire department ambulances in there if needed. It's just something that really needs to be addressed, not only for safety, but for just the long-term maintenance of the asphalt.
Okay, you have any, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So the agenda says that you're asking for 145?
That's what the agenda says.
But you said, actually, you need 164.
The bids, the lowest bid came in $164,007.
Can we change that?
Right.
I probably should table it to the next meeting, since that limits us.
To 145.
Kim, you're not prepared to start work right yet?
No, it's, it's going to be a while.
Yeah.
Weather, obviously, it's hard to do in the snow.
Right. Yeah. I don't know if you saw, I have a copy of that agenda in front of you, but item A, actually, the wording is, in the advanced complex and in the amount not to exceed 145.
I see that now, I didn't.
Yeah, and I know, I'm just trying to dig through it right now, and I could see the 164007, so I think that's something we're going to have to read.
Do we have this, Commissioner Hill, do we have the flexibility to approve it at a higher rate?
I don't. Well, not with today's agenda.
Okay.
I think that this, this amount here limits what action can be taken at this meeting.
I guess we could discuss it a little bit, so we're prepared. I mean, I just have a question, the raise, obviously, is the price of oil, I'm sure, and everything else gone up, so.
Again, the last number that I had to kind of base this on was two years ago.
Yep.
And then I added, I added some on to that, and now it's, the oil and everything has just gone crazy.
Certainly understandable, that's for sure.
I think from, you know, just my opinion, Commissioner Hill, again, we obviously have to wait till its agenda is right, but this is probably going to do nothing but go up in price.
Yeah.
You know, if we see another oil hike or more oil hikes, it's definitely something that needs to be done. I mean, there's well over a million dollars in asphalt out there that we want to take care of.
I agree with that.
So, you know, it is a huge cost, but we want to take care of the stuff we have. That's my two cents.
I will have to double-check to see if they're good holding it for another.
That is my, that was my main question right now, is it, is, are we going to lose, is this window going to close on us between now and our next meeting on the 7th of March?
I will have to, I'll confirm that, and hopefully, they will hold that price.
I'm going to throw this out on the table, and you guys, obviously, it's your call on this, but if we're, if this is, we're going to lose this opportunity, and this price is going to go up on us again, I think we need to have a special meeting, just enough for us to be able to, to be able to close this contract out. So if you could get us that, get us that information sooner than later, we'll do what we need to do. And I mean, some of us may have to do it remotely, but I'd be willing to put a special meeting together for it.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
We'll find out the minute I leave.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and table item A, and I'll go to item B, which is a request to transfer funds from existing FY '21, '22 capital budget to be used to purchase a horsestall cleaning equipment in the amount not to exceed 45,373.
Mr. Chair, just to back up a little bit. If Kim were to find out this morning that that bid is, would expire, could we bring it back today?
I would, I'd be willing to do it.
We need to.
You have to.
Oh, we still have to post it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
Thanks for trying.
Yeah.
I don't imagine that they wouldn't hold it for three days.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping they will. I'm hoping they're, they do, they've done a lot of work in this county, and I'm hoping.
Yeah, just let us know as soon as you can, I guess, and we'll.
I'll let you know, and then we'll decide, maybe by the, you could at least.
Get back to Michelle, because the earliest we could do it would be next Monday.
I think it's really important that we find out, so that it's on the agenda correctly on a special meeting as well, if we need to.
Yeah.
In case it has gone up from that.
Yes. Okay, okay, are we ready to move on to B? Yeah. Okay. Item B, request to transfer funds, existing budget, FY '21, '22 capital budget to be used to purchase horsestall cleaning equipment in the amount not to exceed 45,373.
Well, the good news about this is, and I don't know if Ron wants to speak to this, but I took the urgency of this piece of equipment, I'm confident that it would really help us. It's a big stall vacuum, similar to that one the city uses to suck the sewers out, but in a smaller version, that it'll speed up our ability to clean 300 to 1,000 stalls with a fraction of the manpower that we were going to need. I took it also to the WCBA Board last week, and they stepped up and they purchased one. So we will, if it works, we would like to have a second one, and if so, we will put that in our budget for next year. But WCBA paid the $45,300.
Okay, so this is an item that's.
So this is an item that it can be.
Okay, so we're just, we're briefing us on this item, and.
Sure.
It's going to come at us later.
It's going to come at you maybe later.
If you decide you need it, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Kim finds it really difficult to find the staffing he needs to get those stalls cleaned. Used to be able to use the auto camp out here, and it's on and off anymore.
Okay.
And more often on, and getting people through temporary, one of the temporary agencies is not working well. And many times, he has to, he has events back-to-back, and to try to get those stalls cleaned to get ready for the next event is becoming increasingly, increasingly difficult. And so if this works, we've heard reports that in a lot of the major livestock centers, like down in Vegas at, what's that called?
South Point.
The South Point uses them, Reno uses them, because for the same reasons, they're saving money by using these, these vacuum trucks versus trying to get the labor to clean these stalls.
Okay.
And I would just add, using one of these, when you have a back-to-back event, when you clean out a row of stalls with these, that goes and gets dumped, and that stall is ready to rent. You don't have stuff sitting out in front that you have to then come back and pick.
Shove one up.
And make people wait, so it's a lot more efficient.
Yeah.
So if it does work, you will be back for a second truck, huh?
If we feel that we need one, I think just to get so many stalls done in two or three days, it might take a second. We're going to try it, that's why I didn't order two now, I guess.
Okay, all right.
And then just really quick, and I know you're in a hurry, also at the same meeting, the WCBA Board stepped up and is going to retrofit barn number two out there in the amount of $85,000. It will include new stall parts, and it will also put a roof, another roof section over, currently, we're putting temporary shade cloth that has to go up and come down, it rips, and so they have stepped up and are going to go ahead and cover some more stalls.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
To add to that a little bit, I was at a meeting in Fallon this week at their new event center, and it's going to be quite the competition for us. They took the pillars out, you don't have to look around pillars, it's a big barn. It's set up to not only have livestock events, they've got meeting rooms in it, they've got almost a cafeteria in it, kind of thing. It's going to be a real competition for Winnebago, so we need to, in my, in my opinion, do everything we can to stay ahead of them. Anytime we, every improvement we can make to this, this building, they've got a lot of money to spend yet. They, they just got a building, they don't have stalls and RV hookups, and everything that we've, we've been spending money for the last 20 years putting in, they have ways to catch up with us, but they're going to try. And so whatever we can do to keep ahead of them is, we need to do it.
Yeah, I agree. Kim, is that what you?
Yep, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Kim. Hey, I think we've got, what, 20, we have 20 minutes before the public hearing. Just go ahead and try to do item, you know what we could do, we could go back to the Balkan Bush discussion, we had a, what was item?
12.
12. I, Ken, I'll just bring you up to speed, we talked about item 12, we had a two-to-two vote on that item, and I wanted to bring it back because you're, you're able to attend finally, but this is that item about Steve Balkan Bush becoming a temporary employee for one day, eight hours, to meet the requirements of the public employee's retirement system to be vested. Mr. Balkan Bush worked for approximately seven years for two governmental agencies in his early career, however, was never vested due to the requirements at that time was a 10-year vesting, you had to have 10. The legislature changed that to a five-year vesting, and they are, there's a loophole in that, that if he can work one day. that if he can work one day for a public entity, he actually is eligible for his, the pension that he earned, that seven years that he earned. So what the proposal is, is that he worked for, and he's done quite a bit of work for us already, but worked for our, going through our ordinance change for our nuisance ordinances. And the idea behind it is to put him there for eight hours, let him satisfy the requirements for his, for his PERS retirement, and also we pick up about $5,000, approximately $5,000 worth of legal work from him. Any rate, it was a discussion on it there. I know this is an item that I wanted to get in front of the board, because I wanted to make sure we're absolutely transparent as to what we're doing here. The proposal was put in front of the district attorney, he saw no problem with it. The proposal was put in front of the PERS board, there is no problem with that as well. So basically, what we're asking to do here is to actually employ him for eight hours, pick up, and for that, we pick up approximately $5,000 worth of work, and he's able to, as a result of that technicality, he's able to collect his PERS retirement that he's earned. So in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing here, so I wanted to make sure all of the board members. I know Commissioner Hill had some, wasn't all that comfortable with it, as well as Commissioner Haas, and right now Commissioner Cherry and myself voted in favor of it. So it's, we wanted to get it out there, no pressure.
Sticking it on me, huh?
No pressure, but I wanted to at least get it on there.
I've been aware of this for a while now, and I've thought a lot about it. My initial response was, no, I don't think that's what we should do. But then, after thinking about it for a while, he paid into the PERS system, they changed it. I think he has a right to the years that he did pay into it. The only problem that I have with it at all would be how many others out there in this situation that would be coming forward, and there may be, I don't know that. But in the light that Mr. Balkan Bush has done a lot of work for the county, and I assume will continue to do some work for the county after this, my end result and my thinking process is that I'm in favor of.
Mr. Chair, a couple of clarifications. So the actual cost to the county is approximately $444.39. He was, we charged out at $41.65 an hour for that eight hours. To answer Commissioner Haas's question, he had a question about a word in the letter that Balkan Bush sent to the commission, or he actually sent it to me, was matriculate. And you're right, Commissioner Haas, it does say to enroll at a college or university. However, it also has synonyms, it means register, sign up for. So all he was trying to say was, I have to come back into the system in order to gain this PERS activation. So that's what he was saying.
Okay.
So would you clarify what Abel came out and told us about? I mean, listening to this discussion, we just took a bribe of $5,000 some odd dollars, and we didn't, okay? So would you clarify what he was saying versus what is in, you know, our staff report here for the amount of money that he actually did do?
Well, I don't understand your comment of a bribe at all, but it's perfectly legal, it's in our statute for him to do this. It's on the books. He took advantage of a statute that was changed by the legislature. He came to Humboldt County because he has great relationships here. I took it to the district attorney and said, you have any problem with this? He said, nope. We went, we called up Gina, said, Gina, do you know about this rule, are you aware of it? She checked into it with PERS, she confirmed that in fact this was a normal legal procedure that could be, you know, they could take advantage of. So all that's before you is to say, do you want him, allow him to take advantage of statute, a legal opportunity to get back into PERS and get his payout that he paid into for many years? That's really all it is. Now, originally, we could have just said, well, to bring it before the board, and it was my idea to say, I talked to Abel, we were hot on the nuisance issue, and of course, you guys were pretty frustrated with that process, and I said, hey, if anybody's got great understanding of, you know, county and state laws, and would understand this as Steve Balkan Bush, guy is brilliant. And so I said, why don't we ask him to redo all of our nuisance statutes for us, in lieu of this $444? So all he was trying to show, I think, was that if we were to go out and hire him separately, it would be around $5,000, you know, for eight or nine hours of work. So the other part of this, if you read his letter, he'll mention that he wants to see it through to the end, which, what that means, and I've had discussions with him about that, is if it takes another 10 hours, 20 hours to get the right nuisance amendments to you, and that's, he doesn't care. Whatever it takes, he'll do it, so, no additional costs.
Thanks. So we had clarification, we have another motion?
Okay, I will do it again.
Yep.
Let me find the wording here, I have it somewhere.
It's on number 12.
Okay, I'm gonna get it right. Bear with me.
No, no problem. There you go, there you go right here.
Okay. I, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Steve C. Balkan Bush for one day as deputy district attorney in the district attorney's office at an hourly rate of $41.06 per hour, for eight hours for work performed on updating the Humboldt County nuisance ordinance, and to afford Mr. Balkan Bush the opportunity to retire with the PERS pension for previous public service rendered to the state of Nevada, its corresponding political subdivisions.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor. We have any additional motion on that, or any additional discussion on the motion?
I guess, this Commissioner Hill again, I just wanted to reiterate from the first time, you know, I, this just doesn't sit well with me, and the reason that it doesn't is, you know, I have to operate under current laws every day in my business. I can't speculate what's gonna happen in the future. I only can operate under what is current today. Unfortunately, when he did his tenure, the vesting time was 10 years. Today, that has changed. He's no longer in the system. You know, I guess my comment would be, you know, go put your time in and sign up for a county job, but for us to just bring him in for one day to, at a small cost, you say, but at a cost to PERS of who knows what, you know, that's gonna be quite a cost to PERS, which affects all of us in this room and everybody that works for the county. I just unfortunately still wanted support of it for that reason, because the laws were the laws at the time he was in his county position, and, you know, unfortunately for him, those have changed over the years, but he's since been out of that, so I'm again not in support of it.
And I'll just, I'd just like to weigh in on that as well. I understand your concern, and, but I would point out is that he isn't asking for anything that he hasn't paid into. The bottom line is, the PERS retirement is, you know, he paid into it, and the, the ability to collect on something he paid was afforded to him by the legislature. It was anticipated when they changed that requirement that there would be those people who fell through the cracks the first time, who would like to take advantage of collecting what they earned. And they allowed for that by saying, if you jump back into the system for a minimum of one day, we're comfortable, the legislature, with you going ahead and drawing what you have earned. And so I understand your concern, it's, they didn't change the, they didn't really change the law at all. They just changed the eligibility, is what they did, so. With that, any additional, is there any additional comment, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three to two, motion carries. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Haas voted nay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, we've got, what, about 10 minutes? Do we want to just take a break, or do you want to go the sage grouse?
Let's do the sage grouse, I think we can do that.
Endangered species chapters approval?
Yep. And that is item?
That's 16.
Okay, we're gonna go on to item 16. Request to approve sage grouse and endangered species chapters to the master plan. This is consideration discussion and possible approval of the county greater sage grouse conservation plan and endangered species plan as part of the Humboldt County land use plan, our plan management, the Humboldt County land use management plan, or our master plan. As you're well aware, we talked about this on and off, you know, we've been chipping away at this, and we're chipping away at a lot of stuff on our master plan. As my, my goal as a commissioner on this board was to complete our master plan rewrites before I retire. And I, we're coming down that road right now, getting close to it, this is just part of that, so. If there any discussion on this, this portion of the master plan rewrite that you guys had a chance to see?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add one thing. This, all of these plans, and specifically this sage grouse one, has been a long time coming. It's a lot of effort on the part of Andy Reber, our consultant, who is just, as we've said before, she's really tremendous, and she really knows her stuff. And I gotta give a lot of credit to Commissioners French and Cherry, they have spent a lot of time. I mean, when we get on these calls with her, it's two, three hours at a time, and we literally go through every line by line by line. And thank God we do, because we end up finding things that are really critical to our big picture and our opportunities to have a standing if something comes up. So I just give a lot of credit to these two guys, that they really work hard in putting this information together, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I appreciate that, Dave, but a lot of this is led by Commissioner French, and I applaud him for his foresight in getting this done. Because it not only helps us as a commission, but it will help future commissions as we go by. They can look at the master plan and say, this is our position, this is the position. And also, our county managers, whether it be Dave or someone else, will know what our positions are when it comes to various issues, whether it's grazing, sage grouse, whatever. It also helps with Dave and them put comments forward when asked to. So something that is, I think, should be an envy to many other commissions that need to do the same thing but haven't yet, so. I want to thank Commissioner French for even bringing this to everyone's light and getting it done.
I appreciate those kind words. It's been, it's been something that I felt, from the first time I read our master plan, when I first came on the board, I realized that we were, we could be in trouble, and especially with a water management plan as well. The good news is, is that where we're going with this right now, and it's kind of been a two-pronged approach to it. I've been running down the track with amending our master plan, but at the same time, I've been pushing pretty hard through the Public Land Steering Committee on Nevada NACO and also National NACO when President Trump was in office, to initiate some of the language that we actually have in our master plan there as well. And the Nevada NACO has adopted the, basically the same language. And so we have, we've got all, kind of the united front coming down on this thing. So it's gonna let us, it's gonna give us the standing we're looking for, and it's going to give us the direction, I think, that as this thing could calm down over another administration and could pick right back up like it is right now under the Biden administration. And I think it's important for us to at least weigh in in terms of what our values are in our county and what we know to be the law under NEPA, and what the requirements for, and what we expect under those requirements for Department of Interior and the Forest Service to adhere to when they try to make these decisions coming down the road, so that's the whole idea behind it. So looking for a motion if you're so desire.
Mr. Chair, too, I would like, if you don't mind, to separate them out, do one for sage grouse and one for endangered species.
Endangered species, okay. So let's go ahead and separate the sage grouse amendment for the master plan first.
I'll make a motion to approve the sage grouse chapter to the master plan.
We have a motion on the floor, discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passage unanimous. Also, the, I need a motion for the ESA amendment to the master plan, Endangered Species Act.
Mr. Chair, for the same reasons that we, as we discussed, that the importance of having a sage grouse plan, I would also like to move that we approve the endangered species chapter to the master plan.
We have a motion on the floor, any additional comments on the motion, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous. Okay, so we are four minutes out from our mass, from our public hearing. So let's go ahead and take that four minutes. So let's go ahead and take that four minutes. Then which is the public hearing. Consideration, discussion, possible approval of, of the following. We're going to start with item A, which is RH 2116, zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of David Selsnick Trust to change the C commercial zoning designation to CH highway commercial zoning designation on property located at East Winnebago Boulevard, IAD interchange assessors parcel 10-0262-01. Discussion, possible action?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just for clarification and to be on the record, all statutory notifications were done. It was posted in the paper. Planning Commission, we did the notification. So I don't have to repeat it on all of these. The Planning Commission at their January 13th meeting recommended approval on all these zone changes. The first five are trying to clean up the C zoning, which we have not recognized since the 1980s, so.
Okay. I guess we just, we're not going to, we're going to have to take a separate motion on each of the five, but is there any questions that we, any commissioners would have for Betty while she's here, having to do with the first five? Okay. Looking for a motion?
We need to go out to the public.
Oh, public comment, yes. Any public comment concerning item A on RH 2116? Not seeing any public comment. Back to the commission. Does commission have any discussion on that or a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion on RH-21-16. Zone change application be approved on behalf of David D. Selsnick Trust to change the C commercial zoning designated to highway commercial zoning designation on property located at the East Winnebago Boulevard, IAD interchange assessors parcel number 10-0262-01.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item B, RH 2117, zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Sawtooth RV LLC to change the C commercial zoning designation to M3 open land use zoning designation on property located at 24770 North US Highway 95, Orvada, Nevada, assessors parcel 03042107. Any discussion on that parcel? We're going to go out to the public. Any public comment on item B, RH 2117? Not hearing any public comment. I'll come back to the board. Any further discussion or motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion RH-21-17, don't change application on behalf of Sawtooth RV LLC to change the commercial zoning designation to open land use zoning designation on property located at 24770 North US Highway 95, Orvada, Nevada, assessors parcel number 03-0421-07.
Okay, we have a, have a motion on the floor. Discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we're going to go to item C. Which is a zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Sawtooth Properties LLC to change the C commercial zoning designation on CH highway commercial zoning designation on property located at 24810 North US Highway 95, Orvada, Nevada, assessors parcel 03042116. I'll go out first to the public. Does anybody in the public have any comment on this item, which is item C, RH 2118? Not seeing any, back to the board. Further discussion? We get a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion. RH-21-18, zone change application submitted by the Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Sawtooth Properties LLC to change the commercial zoning designation to highway commercial zoning designation on property located at 24810 North US Highway 95, Orvada, Nevada, assessors parcel number 03-0421-16.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Go to item D, RH 2119. Zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Maxell and Teresa Willis Trust to change the C commercial zoning designation to CH highway commercial zoning designation on property located off SR 789 Golconda, Nevada, assessors parcel Go out to the public. Do we have anybody in the public who has anything to say about item D, RH 2119? Not seeing any public comment. I'll come back to the board. Does the board have any discussion? Or a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion on RH-21-19 to approve a zone change submitted by the Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Maxell and Teresa Willis Trust to change the C commercial zoning designation to CH highway commercial zoning designation on property located off of SR 789 Golconda, Nevada, assessors parcel number 08-0402-01.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any additional comment on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Go to who? Item E, RH 2120. Zone change application submitted by the Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Joseph D. Scott Trust to change the C commercial zoning designation to CH highway commercial zoning designation on property located off of SR 789 Golconda, Nevada, assessors parcel I'll whip this up to public comment this time. Does any public comment on item E for RH 2120? Not seeing any public comment. We'll come back to the, to the board. Does the board have any additional comments or discussion on that item? Or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion RH-21-20 to approve the zone change application submitted by the Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Joseph D. Scott Trust to change the C commercial zoning designation to HC highway commercial zoning designation on property located at SR 789 Golconda, Nevada, assessors parcel number 08-0611-04.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item F, MP 2103, master plan amendment application subject, submitted by Desert Mountain Surveying as agent for ARJ Properties LLC to amend the open space multiple use master plan designation to commercial master plan designation. Subject property is located at the Rose Creek Interchange Assessors Parcel 05048101 and 050482-01.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Betty, this is going from open space, multiple use to commercial?
Correct.
Is there a commercial? I mean, it, I know it's a different area, but everything above that went from commercial to CH.
This is a master plan amendment, so in order for the next item to be approved, we have to change the master plan on the parcels.
Commissioners, if I could, John Milton Desert Mountain Surveying, I represent ARJ Properties, one of the owners was going to be here today, but the last time I talked to him, he was stuck in traffic because of the wreck. He'd been there three hours, so he's going to try to be here by 10:30, but I don't think he's going to make it. Yes, ARJ Properties wished to develop the Rose Creek Interchange area on the north side, northwest side, acquired the property from Nevada land and resources. So they filed the master plan amendment in order to go from open space to commercial. And then that, as Betty said, that will allow them to then file a zone change application to go from open or M3 to, in this case, highway commercial.
Okay. This on item MP 2103, which is item F. Take this out to the public. Does the public have any comment on item F, MP 2103? Not seeing any public comment and back to the commission. Does the board have any additional comments or questions? Discussion on this item? How about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion MP-21-03, master plan amendment application submitted by Desert Mountain Survey, Surveying as agent for ARJ Properties LLC to amend the OSMU Open Space Multiple Use Master Plan Designation to Commercial Master Plan Designation. Subject property is located at the Rose Creek Interchange Assessors Parcel Numbers 05-0481-01 and 05-0482-01.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to item G, which is RH 2121, zone change application submitted by Desert Mountain, Mountain Surveying as agent for ARJ Properties LLC to change the M3 open land use zoning designation to CH highway commercial zoning designation. Subject property is located at the Rose Creek Interchange Assessors Parcel 05048101 and 05048201. Okay, I'm going to take this item G, RH 2121, out to the public. Public have any comment on item G, RH 2121? Not seeing any public comment. I'm back to the board. Does the board have any additional comment on this zone change application?
If I could, I'd give you just a quick update on what?
Sure.
Owners intend to do. This zone change is approved for highway commercial. They will, attempting to build a, at first, a convenience store gas station, followed by an RV park and then a destination RV park, larger. RV park that would have OHV trails, walking trails and, and some amenities that would attract people to stay, not overnight, but maybe for a couple of days. That's the ultimate goal. If they, the RV park approval will have to come back to the Planning Commission. Does it go back here?
No, no, just the planning commission.
Goes back to the planning commission as a conditional use.
Sure. Okay. Okay.
I would add that this zoning is consistent with zoning that's across the other side of the freeway. CH zoning already exists over there.
Yep, yep. So does any of the commissioners have any additional questions for Mr. Milton? Okay. Any additional comments? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve for RH-21-21, approve the zone change submitted by Desert Mountain Surveying as agent for AJ, ARJ Properties LLC to change the M3 zoning designation to CH zoning designation. Subject property is located at Rose Creek Interchange Assessors Parcel Number 05-0481-01 and 05-0482-01.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for consideration.
Okay, we're going to move on to item B, under the public hearing. Item, which is a consideration, discussion, possible action per Humboldt County Code HCC 8.04.010 related to a nuisance complaint filed against property located at 7140 Jackson Road, Winnebago, Nevada, owned by Dawn L. Sakarata, assessors parcel number 13-0541-16. Said action to include allowing the property owner more time to abate the nuisance and/or request the district attorney's office to take legal action against the property owner in the event that that, that that action hasn't occurred.
I don't think so.
So. I know, Mark, you're, you're, you're here for that item.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know. We may just have to ask out to see if anybody else is on here. I don't, there's a couple of numbers I don't recognize, so they might be on the, online?
Do we have anybody online who?
Oh, yes, Sakarata is on, yes.
Okay.
Keaton Sakarata.
So those persons online for this item, could you identify yourself for the record?
You may have to unmute yourself.
Hey, Keaton, if you can hear, you need to unmute yourself. Is there any code he needs to put in?
It looks like he's on a computer, so it would just be to tap his?
Unmute?
His, his little mute button there.
So Keaton, if you and Dawn are there, you might want to unmute and speak up. I just love technology.
Mr. Chair, just so you also know, Levi Carl from Building Inspector is on the line and he and I have been talking about this since the last meeting. And I'll let Levi provide you an update. The one thing that we were looking for from Lostra Engineering was some kind of a date for demolition. But again, I'll let Levi give you an update on that if you're available. Now Levi?
Levi, are you on?
Yeah, yes, and yes.
You have the floor.
Levi Carl, Building Inspector, for the record. Dawn did reach out to me yesterday. He left a message. He just stated that Lostra Engineering provided two different house plans for him. He chose one of them, but as of today, our office has not issued any permits for the demolition or anything for the property.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say right now, Mark, have you seen any activity out there at all since our last meeting?
No, this is Mark Eivitz for the record, still under oath. Now, there's been no changes, and I, I was with the weather, I wasn't sure if Don would be able to make it, but obviously Keaton and on, online. You know, so two months ago, we seemed to rally it around the concept of making some progress with some interactions with his engineer out of Elko and Levi Carl. And here we are, two months later, I thought we were gonna have kind of a signed contract with a demolition contractor, with a date of when they were gonna complete the work, some hard evidence of, of something you could put on your calendar, when things were gonna be cleaned up across the way from my residence. So I'm concerned that two months have gone by, and what I would consider to be a minimal amount of work to get it into a calendar of timeframe to get some work done there. And I hope we're not gonna go another month and just keep coming back here with no state of progress. So again, with due respect to Don and his family, and what they're, what they've got to get done over there, I would think it'd be reasonable to have a signed contract with the demolition construction company, and a note from that construction company saying when they're gonna start and complete the work. That just seems to be reasonable to me.
Well, Mark, I think that's, you know, that's basically the understanding of this board, when we had the last meeting, we extended this, this deadline out, because it looked like we had momentum, it looked like there was a step that needed to be accomplished prior to that demolition to occur. And, and I guess having said that, I think, Mr., I asked specifically of the parties when they left, you understand what it is you're gonna provide us at the next meeting, and they both indicated yes. So at that, with, with that, I'm asking Mr. Sakarata, if you're on the phone right now, I need, I need you to weigh in and tell us exactly what it is you've accomplished, or what you're about to accomplish, relative to our extension that we gave you from the last meeting.
Mr. Chair, they're no longer on the line at this point.
Okay.
If they were coming out from Reno, they may have had the same issue that Mr. Milton's clients had in terms of access.
But, but again, there's been no changes, and here we are again, two months later. It just, as a, as a registered professional engineer in the state of Nevada, what, what you are asking him to provide from a licensed engineer and licensed contractor is not that complicated. It, it's something that should be, if the business or, if they're worth their, their weight, it should be relatively easy for them to provide exactly what we just talked about, and that's, you know, what we're gonna do, when we're gonna do it, and when it'll be done.
I don't disagree with that. So what's your pleasure, Commissioners? I think we gave ourselves the option, as, as is in the language in our agenda item, that we have two directions we can go. We, we refresh our memory, we, we extended this one more meeting in order to accomplish the, the step of getting the engineer's report and the, and a timeline to, as to what was gonna happen there prior to removing that, that damaged building. Both parties acknowledged that, both parties agreed to that, both parties promised that before they left. I am of the opinion that we have that direction. I was hopeful that we would drive a stake in the heart of this thing today and move on to something else. It appears to me that we may end up having to go take a left turn and, and hand this to the district attorney. But that's, that's me, so I'm, I'm looking for direction from the board.
This Commissioner Hill, I, I agree, I think it needs to move on. I guess for the benefit of the Sakaratas, maybe with the weather today, if we could try to reach out to them, maybe Dave or Tammy has a number where we could try to call them.
And I think Levi's had a, developed a reasonable relationship, at least in terms of some communication by phone.
At least for today, maybe, yeah, maybe they're. Hopefully, we can get some answers.
Right. There he is.
Come on up, Don, I saved you a seat.
Got here just in time.
Right.
Well, we were looking for you. We're, you know, we're at that portion of the, you're right on time, you slid into home base. I, what we are asking for, as you remember, Mr. Sakarata, you agreed to, we, we agreed as a board to extend this another, another meeting. I think the, what our expectation was from you, and I think you agreed to that, was that you would provide us an update in terms of the engineer's report as to what was gonna happen, and a timeline that went along with that, in terms of demolition of that building.
Yeah.
So that's kinda where we're at with it right now. Could you give us an update as to where you're at with that?
I talked to Mike yesterday, and he was getting ready to.
Mr. Sakarata, could you boob that microphone closer to you there? Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to Mike yesterday, and he was getting ready to start on the structural design, the process, and he thought he should be finishing up by the end of the week on that.
On the construction of a new building there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what about the demolition of the, the burned out structure?
That'll be forthcoming.
That, you, you don't have that at this time?
No, no.
Mr. Lostra was, I believe was from Elko, was gonna provide that to you before? What is the status of that?
Yes, uh-huh.
So he has not gotten back to you?
No, no. I can get back with Levi when I do find out on that.
As you're well aware, we're, we're, there's a timeline here that's, that's ticking away.
Yes.
We've been months now trying to get to where we're at right now.
Yes.
We're eager, I know you're eager, I know your neighbors are eager to get this resolved.
Yes.
So, so for clarification, Don, is it, who's doing, who's doing the, who's the licensed contractor that you're in touch with that will do the demolition?
The actual demolition, I am not quite positive on that.
Okay. So who's coordinating that activity, you or Lostra?
Lostra.
And you talked to him this morning, and he has done no legwork on lining up a licensed contractor to demolition the existing?
No, the demolition, the, the construction.
And Levi, it, it's my understanding, Levi, that you've had conversations with Lostra, is that correct?
Yes, I have, and I knew Lostra and Braemar Construction actually had a conversation about the demolition. But again, nobody wanted to provide me with any letter, with any dates to start the demolition. So I still don't know to this day who the contractor's gonna be.
And Commissioners, if I'm overstepping my bounds, I don't apology, apologize, but trying to get things done. Would it be acceptable if Don, while he's in town, was to get with Levi, and they were to jointly call Lostra and package up some details around, you gotta demolish before you rebuild, the demolition can take place without construction designs for a rebuild, it would seem that maybe Levi could, could nail Lostra down and find out if, if there's something that Don hasn't provided to Lostra that, it sounds to me like Lostra, as a reputable engineering firm, if they're on, on the hook to also find a demolition contractor, it seems like they don't know that.
Yeah.
Because it, that should not be that complicated of a step. So that, that would be a suggestion to get off the schneid here, and maybe Levi and Don.
Suggestion, um, well, and I apologize for it. Oh, sorry, they finally let me unmute, this is Keaton Sakarata.
Levi, is that?
It's Keaton Sakarata.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Keaton.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, Board, but, you know, just kinda talking, kinda almost bit inclusive, but talking directly to Mark. Mark, this is not, this is not a, you know, a, a, a commercial, commercial project, this is residential, and this is part of the difficulty that we've had since day one, is trying to get these things lined out, you know, in, in, in contractor selection, because all the contractors have kind of been abating as far as hard, hard dates to iron down. So we apologize, but this is kind of what we've been dealing with for the past couple of years. So this is the, kind of the frustration, I think, that's led to the situation that we're in, you know, both yourself, and then, and then my dad and myself as well. So yes, we will continue to push on that, and again, we apologize, but, you know, trying to iron down dates where contractors are even just get one to commit, has been, has been the difficulty since day one.
So Keaton, I would suggest then, that it sounds like you have some documented records of who've you, what contractors you've talked to, when you've talked to them, who you talked to, the owner or someone subordinate of the owner, and that they said they can't help you out. It, it, again, you know, with the amount of licensed contractors in this state, eventually somebody should be able to say, we can help you out. They may not be able to help you out in Mark Eivitz's timeframe, but at least you'd get on the calendar for, for their project schedule and, and, you know, and be able to report back to the Commissioners here.
Yes, yeah, and, and well, and that was the goal, and we apologize, we kinda, we're, we're, we're not professionals at this, you know, whatsoever, we're trying to find, find the best, you know, any way to get this accomplished. So, you know, and there's where we've had to rely on the expertise for Mr. Lostra. So yes, we will continue to push then, and, and I'm, you know, I'm not opposed to Mr. or Mark's recommendation, you know, to kind of sit down and, and have a grouping meeting, you know, to see where things are at, and actually get an iron down date.
This is Levi Carl again, if I can say something real quick. So I know Lostra has reached out to Braemar Construction here in town, and Braemar's kind of a newer construction company than Winemucca, and they just pulled out, I would say about six homes in town. So I know they're a really busy company, they're, they're trying to build six houses right now in the city, so I just don't know when they could actually come out and start the demo, like Keaton said. I, I think it's hard here in Winemucca, even our department struggles with finding construction companies for any residential jobs here.
Mr. Chair, maybe we can help. The county has demolished a building just recently here on Bill, on Bridge Street. We really wanna take down this one on Malarki. It'll be on the March 7th agenda for approval to do that, as well as some others that we want you to consider. So I would be happy to share with you, Mr. Sakarata, our company that we've used, they're excellent, they do a great job, and they seem to be able to mobilize pretty quickly. So, and they've been waiting on this, we've been working through Mike Shepherd with that, he's got a great relationship with these folks, so we'll give you that information, you can talk directly with them and maybe get a quote, and so you can move quicker. Maybe that will coincide with ours, maybe cut your costs for mobilization.
Sounds great.
So we'll, we'll do that for you.
All right. So we have a, we have a solution then? We, Ms. Sakarata, you agree to that, you can get, get with our county manager, put together the.
I'll work through Levi, I'll give.
Through Levi and the county managers, so we can give you the logistics necessary. And, and if, if, if it's the pleasure of this board, we'll, we can get a report on that item, that product, the progress of that item on this next meeting on March 7th, March 7th? Is that right, March 7th?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that, is that the pleasure of the board? Or not?
This Commissioner Hill, yeah, I would like to see, I mean, Sid, we've been going round and round with this, and, and I understand contractors sometimes are hard to get, but sometimes it's hard to agree on pricing, you know, who knows what the issues are, but, you know, put something in stone where we get a report from the actual contracting agency, whether it was a go or a no-go. But we gotta move forward with something versus just, you know, we, we set a precedence, and then they come back in, and we let it go again, and then we let it go again, and, you know, we've gotta, we've gotta hold some ground rules and, and some hard, fast timelines, and accountability, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at, that we get some reports from some actual professionals, I guess, that are involved in this, versus just us sitting here talking every meeting. Does that make sense?
With the, you know, putting, putting a language in the motion that would, would that we expect a completion report in the next meeting?
Yeah, I guess, that's what I'm hearing, is, you know, it's, it's Braemar, and it's, it's Lostra, and, and then, well, they don't have time, well, do we as a board really even know that there's any contracting sign with these, these outfits, or is it just talk at this time with these?
Well, that's right.
With these professionals, these construction companies?
It's my understanding that if Braemar is slow called, they can't do it, then Mike will have his crew take care of it.
And, and at this stage, with today's meeting, Mr. Sakarata's gonna meet with our staff with regard to, with regard to the contractors?
I guess what I'm, yeah, this Commissioner Hill, what I'm trying to get out is if Mr. Sakarata is, is, you know, truly has done his legwork, and, and is trying to get these contractors lined up, then, you know, he's, he's probably done all he can do, but if the construction companies are dragging their feet and telling him a story, and, and then not following through, then they need to be held accountable by this board, or we hire somebody else to, to get the job done.
Yeah, Mark Eivitz for the record, and, and Don, when, when you say that, it's your understanding, it's, it's, it's your project, so if it was me, my understanding would be presenting to you copies of communication or correspondence, or something from the contractor that said, we, sorry, Don, we can't help you out, or, Don, we can, you know, this is our next, this one will have information to you. The, the fact that you talked to these folks the day before the county commissions meeting, as opposed to getting started on it right after the last meeting, is, is a concern to me, because that's, you know, water, the time, the time, you know, times, the clock's ticking, and Keaton, this goes for you, I, I think the conversation needs to be based on what I heard as a potential solution to interact with the contractor that's potentially gonna go under contract with the county, would be that you have that conversation tomorrow, or go down and see Levi this afternoon, as opposed to the day before the next, you know, March 7th meeting, and bring some documentation that, that, that puts some credibility to the feedback you're providing to the Commissioners. I think, out of respect for the Commissioners, frankly, me and the rest of the neighbors, I think that's a reasonable request.
I disagree with you. I think, right now, what, ultimately, this nuisance surrounds the demolition of that house, that building, get, taking care of that nuisance complaint out there. The, the engineering and the, and the, the design work that's going on for the replacement home isn't something that we're concerned with, with regard to this nuisance complaint. So I would say that the news, you know, we need to address the nuisance complaint first. And I think, Mr. Sakarata, if you're amenable to meeting with them, and I, I think my view of this is that March 7th is the drop dead date on this thing. We wanna know, I want, I'd like to see some paperwork as what's happened, what's going to happen, and I wanna, and I'd like to know, just for the, for the purposes of, you know, you don't have to drive all the way up here, and, and Mark doesn't have to come in here, and, and we've got other business too that we need to deal with here. So we're down to the end of the, end of the trail on this thing right now, from our standpoint. So if you're agreeing, agreeable to meeting with our staff, who can provide you with the folks, the names of the folks that can take that building down, we'd like a report to that effect from Levi, and, and your representative or yourself on March 7th.
Something in writing. Something in writing.
In writing, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Get that in the form of a motion? Mr. Chair?
Clarify again, Mark Eivitz, clarify, something in writing from Don, or from these licensed contractors?
From the contractor.
Contractors.
What do you want in writing, though?
That's all right. I would like to see something in writing from a contractor, that they've been approached, and they have an agreement to do the work.
I, I'm gonna have to come from this from another angle, I, I can share his frustration of trying to get contractors right now. I've got a couple of projects that I've been trying to get done for a year, and I'll have contractors say, yeah, I'm interested, I'm interested, but I don't get a call back. And what are you supposed to do? You know, I, I think Mr. Sakarata. Sakurata has done some of the stuff that we asked him to do, moved some Connexes, moved some vehicles. And I don't doubt that he's trying to get ahold of some contractors that won't. Today, this is a contractor's world out there. They can pretty much pick and choose what they want to do. To get a commitment of time, one will do something, you're not going to get it. You might want it, but you're not going to get it.
Well, I'd like, and I think ultimately, you mentioned that, Mark, I think ultimately that way I see that is we either get a, we're either going to see a correspondence indicating that contractors are on the hook to be there at such and such a date, or better yet, they've already started on it, or notification from you that you've contacted these people and you got a Dear John letter out, and they're not coming. I'd like to know one way or the other where we can go with this. If you work with Levi and with our county manager, though, we have somebody here that has worked for the county that would take that building down and do it in a heartbeat. So if you could do that, and then we can get a report to that effect, I think that's what the board would like to see. And, but I'd like to point out, though, is that we're down to the end of it right now. March 7th is the drop dead date on this now. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Is that amenable to the board? Okay. Motion to that effect, then, to extend this to the 7th? Because we got to go one way or the other on this today. We're either going to refer this to the district attorney for action out of the DA's office, or we're going to allow Mr. Sakurata to the 7th to abate this issue.
Let me try. Let me try. I'd like to make a motion per Humboldt County Code 8.04.010 related to the nuisance complaint filed against property located at 7140 Jackson Road, Winnebago, Nevada, owned by Don L. Sakurata, Accessors Parcel Code Number 13-0541-16, that we move this to the March 7th meeting, and at that time, we will, between now and then, Mr. Sakurata will meet with the county manager and Levi Carl to discuss possibly having a contractor that is going to be contracted to tear down some of our property, work with them, to be able to clean this property up, or you find another contractor that is willing to clean the property up. And have something that is in writing to come back to us either in the form of a contract, an agreement with a contractor, or a refusal to give information or contract to Mr. Sakurata.
By March 7th?
By March 7th. Take a breath now. Hope I covered it all.
Any discussion on that motion?
I'm, I know you did a heck of a job trying to make it clear, but, so we're not saying that he had, that he just needs to show evidence that he's approached a contractor and asked for a schedule of, for destruction or whatever. Doesn't necessarily have to pin it down to having it done at a certain time.
No, because I think if these contractors aren't willing to do it, our county, our contractor we're working with, the county may make it forward and be willing to work with Mr. Sakurata on a private basis.
Okay.
And I know that they want to move forward because they're talking about building designs and housing plans, but they can't do anything until that's cleaned up.
I just don't, I couldn't go for anything with the drop dead date, because I don't think Mr. Sakurata is going to be able to do that. But as long as he can show that he's attempted to get a contractor, and then it's up to, you know, or two, and then it's going to be up to the contractor to, I don't know if he, you know, they might schedule something, but they can commit, I guess, a commitment of some type, not necessarily a drop dead date.
I can tell you this, Mr. Cherry, if you go to the Nevada State Licensed Contractors, you can pull up a list of all the contractors licensed in the state of Nevada and what their specialties are. And there's probably 30 or 40 of them. I would, if I was in Don's shoes and he was holding me accountable to clean up a nuisance across from his house, I would expect to have a call in to every one of those with a prepared something that if they say, well, send me the details of what you're asking me to do. Here's the square footage of my house, here's some pictures of what's burned out, so I can take a look at and let you know if I quote can't get back to you because I'm too busy, or if I can, when I might be able to do that. But it would be a long list with names of the people I talked to, the dates I talked to them, the phone numbers, and what their conversation was like. That's what I would provide to Don and to the county commissioners after having been in hearing after hearing since August. So I hear what you're saying, but I just procured a metal building for my backyard and a contractor to put it up, and it didn't take me that long to do that. So, so again, a level of frustration is mounting because we're going to come back March 7th, and he's going to say, you know, that I talked to so-and-so the day, you know, the day before, so March 6th, and we're back right where we are here. If that's what we're going to keep doing, then I think we're wasting your time. Let's just, you know, what can, the whole thing, and I'll, you know, my wife and I'll go across and demolish the building for him at a reasonable price.
I hear you. But I've been trying to get a metal building up for a year now, and I haven't.
I can help you out.
Okay.
Let's talk during your next break. I get it. So this is what the understanding is. I, you know, I think, Mark, to your comment and whatnot, nobody's more frustrated than having to deal with this, because this isn't the only one we've had to deal with. And the bottom line is that we're in a process right now with, we have got some legal assistance to modify this nuisance ordinance so that we can, we get a little more teeth in this thing from our standpoint. But the bottom line is, Mr. Sakurata is showing up now, and he is making a good faith effort. I just want to make sure that we don't stall. From your standpoint, we don't stall on that thing. From a standpoint, you know, I think we're offering something here from the county that give him a pathway forward. We've got a contractor that has dismantled, taken a building down for us already, and is fixing to do another one for us soon. And, you know, the options that we have left in front of us in is abatement, and the county doing it, or send it to the district attorney. So we're, I'd like to work with him as long as he stays good faith in there with us. If you, and he's made the promise, he's made the agreement that he's going to get with our county and our Levi to try to do this. I think we have a motion on the floor to accept that, and I'd like to stick with that on the 7th, so.
I just have one more comment, Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner Hill, I agree. We went round and round with this. I would like to see a drop dead date of next meeting of having a contract in place. The comments here, we heard that he talked to him the day before, you know, that's not acceptable to me. Again, like Mr. Eivitz said, if somebody's holding me accountable for something, I'm going to be on it and utilize as much time as I can to have answers. I'm not satisfied with the answers we're provided, other than I made a phone call yesterday. I would be in favor of using your next two weeks and get yourself somebody lined up and come back here with a contract. It might not be demoed in the timeframe that Eivitz and the rest of the neighbors would like, but at least we have something solid at the next meeting that we're going to have this demoed by next summer or hopefully in the next month. But it just seems like, you know, during the last meeting, we held more accountability than we are now. So it seems like we're kind of going backwards. So I would be in favor of having a hard contract in place.
So you'd like to amend the motion to that effect?
I would.
Okay. Are you acceptable with that motion?
I'd accept amendment.
All right. We have a motion on the floor with an amendment, which will...
Can we be a little clearer on exactly what that amendment is?
I was just about to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Words in your mouth. Commissioner Hill is requesting date, but the March 7th date will actually have a contract in place or a refusal letter.
Yeah, and I guess that would be my amendment, and to maybe address, Mr. Cherry, is, you know, have a contract in place by a legitimate licensed contractor that will do the work, or two refusal letters that, from contractors that say, we're not willing to take this project on. You know, and if he comes back with two refusal letters, then maybe we do have that issue of there's no contractors available. But I just don't buy that. I think if you look hard enough, you can find a contractor.
Yeah. And at the same time, Mr. Sakurata has agreed to engage our, the contractor we've used locally in this county, and that might be the guy we're talking about. So I think we have a solution on the table.
At least we have some accountability, and we can hopefully get this.
All right.
How you doing, Tammy?
You got it?
Here is mine.
Okay.
Do you need more clarification?
No, I, your clarification was that by the March 7th date, there will be a contract in place with a legitimate contractor or two refusal letters presented.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Legitimate or licensed?
Licensed.
Licensed.
Licensed, yeah, licensed contractor with a Nevada State Contractor's license, not a business license.
And again, I would, I would just, again, Don's in town, made the drive up from Reno, made it safely. I would take advantage of this opportunity to get with Levi sometime today, if Levi has a few minutes, maybe even reach out to this contractor that you've utilized and get the conversation going today as opposed to March 6th.
Good idea. I'd start sooner than later. Yeah, agreed.
Well, and I apologize, I couldn't get it off mute, but that was the verbiage used, and that was the, that was just indicating the last conversation was as of yesterday. That was that, let me reclarify that to follow-up calls. That is not an initial call, just so the commission and Mark, just so you know.
Yeah, that was just, most of my phone calls have been the day before the meeting, so then I'm brought up to date.
Okay.
Like I say, you know, a lot of this, as you know, is after the demolition, but Mike has come up with several designs, and my family and I have picked one to go with.
All right. Hey, we have a motion, amended motion on the floor. Any additional comments on that motion?
Well, I just, I'm not in favor of putting a drop dead date. I sympathize with both Mark and Mr. Sakurata. I understand where Mark's coming from. But I, and I, and to, and I also believe that Mr. Sakurata is trying. He made a trip from Reno today in adverse weather conditions to be here for this meeting. He was late, but who wouldn't be?
Who wouldn't?
And he is, I think, honestly trying to do what he can get, see what he can get done to get, so I trust something's going to happen. Whether it can happen in our timeframe, I don't believe so.
So do you think, is it your feeling, Commissioner, then, that a request for a contract or a refusal letter is unreasonable?
No, I think that, just a, like Mark said, a record of, I made this call to this contractor, you know, a record of those phone calls and what was said in those phone calls. Hopefully by the next meeting, he's going to have a contractor. But to guarantee that he can, he needs to have one by next meeting, I don't think.
Well, and that's why, this Commissioner Hill, again, if I could, Mr. Chair, that's why I put the two refusal letters in there, Commissioner Cherry, just in case he does come up against that, where nobody's willing to take the job, at least then we have two letters of refusal to document that this process is moving forward.
He can attempt to try to get those letters, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, just as a reminder, that the house, this whole issue started two years ago.
And Mark, this whole issue started two years ago when the house burnt. So we're, so two years later, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for some documentation that contractor's either going to help him out or not help him out.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. Any additional comments? All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any close? Okay, we have a nay. Commissioner Cherry is a nay. Okay, this motion moves forward.
Thank you, commissioners.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sakurata. You get a chance to meet...
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get to our Andre and...
What is, March 7th?
Okay, we're going to move back to item nine.
Yeah, because then I got to give you a couple of things, too.
Okay. We're going to take, as Andre and friends come up, we're going to take about five minutes, and then we're about to be on board for that, so. Apologize.
Only thing I have to say in advance is, I've got a child, as we picked up at school, so we have to be out here by 10 till.
10 till.
10 to 11?
No.
To 12?
Yeah, so I might, probably kind of quarter till, 10 till, yeah. He'll be out in the cold.
Okay.
Give us the high level, though.
So I might go a little faster than normal.
That's all right.
We've all had, we've all been through this, too, so there'll be some questions, but I'm sure there'll be, you can get through them. So we'll keep that in mind, though.
If you don't mind.
Well, we, we hung you up for an hour. It's been one of those days.
I told Andre it's going to be one of those days. Oh, come on. Before we got here. So, yeah, it was just, it was kind of like one of those things.
We were expecting a bill, a commercial public comment beginning of this.
Yeah.
Last time looking out.
Okay, well, let me...
We're going to show up and tail it. Anyway, it was good on you guys, because it would have been an hour and a half later than this, so, maybe.
Well, then, Zach could come and...
I'm so sorry. It's crazy.
We're good, we're good. I just wanted to give some full disclosure.
Yeah.
Say we're convening this, start a public comment, do the presentation, close the public comment, say we're going back to...
So we're going to do McDermott, the General Improvement District first, and...
Forward.
Okay.
George, how does that change?
Okay.
It's not simple. But, yeah, I gave me the county first, of course.
Oh.
I was trying to keep them separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dave, I'm not sure if you've started, but you guys are muted.
Thank you, Emma. Now we're live, sorry about that.
Should we go back again or not?
You might want to just say we've opened the McDermott GID.
For the record, this is Commissioner French. We're opening this meeting of the McDermott General Improvement District. We opened the meeting with public comment and have, we have not received any public comments, so we're now to the item at hand, which is the McDermott General Improvement District Financial Rule and Audit Report from Drake Rose and Associates. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So the third page into the audit report is the, the auditor's report, independent auditor's report, which is our opinion. And just to kind of clarify before we start, there was an audit that was required for this particular district because there was greater than $300,000 in expenditures related to the construction in progress up there. So those capital expenditures do count to cause this to be an audit. So this isn't something that occurs every year, but in years that it's greater than $300,000, there is that requirement for the audit. So to start, I'm going to go through the opinion paragraph by paragraph, just to explain what's, what the content is. So if you go to the first paragraph, that's the scope of the audit, it states what is being audited. The second paragraph is management's responsibility for the financial statements. The third paragraph is the auditor's responsibility, and that is to express an opinion on these financial statements. Further down, it states what our procedures are. And if you can turn to the next page, this is where our opinion lies at the top of the page. It's an unqualified clean opinion.
I'm going to interrupt you, we're in the financial statements, it seems like, I don't know if everybody's on. The little one, okay.
So we're on.
I didn't want you trying to keep track with her if you're in the letter.
We're on page two. And so at the top of page two is our opinion, it's an unqualified clean opinion, and it states that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. The next paragraph is required supplementary information. And that states what is supplementary information as well as what our opinion is related to that. The next section is other information, and it states, again, what other information is and what our opinion is relative to that. If you turn to the next page, this is other reporting required by governmental auditing standards. This is required by the state, and with that, we have to test related to internal controls and provide a yellow book audit report. That is included within these financial statements. I'm not going to go through that particular audit report. There are no deficiencies that are related to our internal control testing, so therefore we don't have anything to report within that. If you turn to the next page, it's M D N A. This is analysis from a different perspective, more of a layman's perspective. If, if you so desire, it's something to go through that gives you more information, but I'm going to strictly stay with the financial statements that we're reporting on. So if you could turn to page seven. This is the statement of net position for McDermott General Improvement District. It's the assets and liabilities and the equity position at one point in time, which is June 30th, 2021. On the sewer for cash, that decreased by approximately $7,000 over the previous year. On the right-hand side is water fund, that cash decreased by approximately $15,000 over the previous year. Further down is a total capital assets net. The assets for sewer decreased by approximately $20,000. For water, they increased by approximately $700,000, which is truly what the cause for this audit is, is for those capital expenditures. Further on down the page, there's bonds payable. The payment related to that from a principal standpoint is approximately $5,000 annually, resulting in a balance of about $215,000 still outstanding for McDermott GID. If you turn to page 14. This is note two to the financial statements, mid-page. This is where we have to state if there's any non-compliance items related to revised, Nevada revised statute or administrative code, of which there were none. If you turn to page 18. This is the changes in net position, schedule of revenue expenses, expenditures and changes in net position for the sewer fund. If you go about a quarter down the page, services and supplies is at approximately $25,000, that increased by $12,000 over the previous year. Further down the page is operating income loss. There was a resultant loss of approximately $20,000. Just below that is the interest expense of approximately $96,000 for a total net loss of approximately $30,000. That does include depreciation, so when you look at it from a cash flow standpoint, you'll see that, you know, cash flow was about break even. However, with the capital expenditures, you would expect for you to continue to replace, to enhance the process. So therefore, capital expenditures should be relatively close to what your depreciation is for, you know, full replacement at current standards. And so with a $29,000 capital expenditure replacement, your cash would decrease by approximately $30,000. With $107,000 in cash, effectively, within about four years, cash could be depleted within this particular fund under that particular scenario, if you're going to continue with replacements at the level of depreciation. If you turn to page 20. This is the schedule of revenues, expenses and changes in net position for the water fund. Revenues did increase slightly over the previous year. Services and supplies increased by approximately $25,000 over the previous year. If you go down to about three quarters of the page, you'll see income loss before capital grants and contributions, that was a loss of approximately $28,000. Similar situation, if you were to replace at the level of depreciation, which would be a wash, from a, from a net income standpoint, it would be a wash if you added the depreciation back from a cash flow standpoint, but if you were to replace, then there would be a true loss of 28,000 with $57,000 in cash. Cash could be depleted within two years within this particular fund. Just below that, there's a federal grant and a state grant from N D E P. They were the loans that were provided to do the capital acquisitions. Part of it was federal, part of it was state. So what happened is there were loans that were let, however, they were forgiven and were created as grants, so that helped assist with the capital expenditures, but did not cover the total cost. Any questions at this point? If not, I'll kind of. Sure.
We did a study on, on rates, fees, and that was when, I remember when Ben was here. Did we, did we increase rates after that study?
We did, and I think that's part of what shows a new revenues coming into the system.
Yeah.
But I, it's one of those things we really need to take a look at it again.
Okay.
Yeah, just based on that.
On both, yes, both the sewer and water.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And that, and that prediction of four-year depletion, is it?
Four years or, and or two years.
Yeah, right.
Could be two years for the water.
Level of depreciation we take on, so it looks like we're going to have to take some action.
Well, plus the fact there's going to be other updates that need to be done. I mean, the one that we're working on now was, you know, not of our doing, but again, it ends up costing you money in the end, so. And there are other things that we need to do, so.
Yeah, and you're fortunate to have the grants, and I think we're in an environment where that's become fairly friendly, but we could be going into an environment where you can't acquire them as easily too.
Yep. Is there any questions for, yes.
I'll take you to the letter unless there's questions at this point related to.
Sue that.
Yep. So if you can go to the letter that's titled McDermott GID, I'll briefly take you through this as well. It's a required communication related to the audit. So at the top, you'll see our responsibility in relation to the financial statements. This describes what our responsibility is. At the bottom of the page, we are required to point you towards the significant deficiencies. That was already included within our audit report, of which there were none. If you turn to the next page, it's the plan, scope and timing of the audit. We conducted our audit consistent with the plan, scope and timing that we had previously communicated to you within our engagement letter. The next paragraph is compliance with all ethical requirements regarding independence. We do write the financial statements, and so to remain independent, we have to have a secondary review, of which we do do within our office. The next paragraph is significant accounting policies. Those are provided within note one of the financial statement. The next item is significant accounting estimates, of which depreciation is the largest estimate and as discussed previously. The last item on the page is financial statement disclosures. The most significant disclosures related to capital assets, mostly because that's the largest item within McDermott General Improvement District. If you turn to the next page, at the top is identified or suspected fraud, of which there were no items of fraud identified. Significant difficulties encountered during the audit, there were no significant difficulties with management. Our uncorrected and corrected misstatements, there were adjustments that we had recommended. All those adjustments were approved and are provided within the financial statements, so they are corrected items. There were no uncorrected items to report on. In mid-page is disagreements with management, there were no such disagreements that arose during the audit. We did receive a representation letter from management, and we already have that in our position, and that goes through different items that you substantiate, that you've provided or disclosed in full. So there's a litany of them, it's a pretty long document. The next item is management's consultations with other accountants, of which we know of no other consultations. The last item is other significant matters findings or issues, of which we had none. So with that, that's what I have for the audit for McDermott GID, and again, I will entertain any questions if you have any.
With regard to the McDermott General Improvement District audit, is there any questions for Andre? Okay, I'm going to, now, we've got this open as a, as a meeting, a general improvement district meeting, so I'm going to go ahead and take public comment for that meeting right now before we leave this item.
Do we need a motion to accept the audit?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, we do. Should I, Mike, should I take public comment first or should I, should we take the motion?
Let's take the motion.
Okay, I'll need a motion then for accepting that audit.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we, we accept the audit from Drake Rose and Associates for the McDermott General Improvement District, Nevada, dated June 30th, 2021.
Okay, I have motion on the, on the floor, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we'll now go to public comment for the McDermott General Improvement District meeting. Any additional public comment? Not seeing any public comment, we'll go ahead and adjourn the McDermott General Improvement District and we'll open the general meeting for the county commission, and we'll move on to item nine or nine, excuse me, item 10 on our agenda, which is the 2020-2021 audit from Drake Rose and Associates for Humboldt County and its financial report. Okay.
Good morning again. For the record, this is Andre Rose with Drake Rose and Associates, and Tara Larson is also with me from Drake Rose and Associates to present the audit. Wanted to thank the commission and the department heads, staff, especially Gina, she puts a lot of work in to get to this point, and Dave and Rona, they all assist. And this year, we're grateful to have the assistance of Don Calcoski in relation to Star City and being able to come up with a value related to that to present within the financial statements. And also, our assessor, Andy Heiser, also helped us with information related to Nevada gold mines, the settlement related to the appeal that is also reflected in this. So we had kind of an ongoing audit, so it didn't, you know, the financial information did not end as of June 30th. There were other items that came in after year end that then had to be reported back to June 30th, so a little different audit this year, but some significant happenings, that's for sure. So please interrupt me with any questions and comments as we go along. Again, I will go through the auditor's report, and that's located at page five within the financial statement. financial statements, or the fifth page in, I should say. It says Drake Rose and Associates at the top of the page. And I'll go through each of the different paragraphs, explaining what the content of the report is. Within the first paragraph is the report on the financial statements. It describes the audit scope. The second paragraph is management's responsibility for the financial statements.
Breaking in on you again, it's the first page with our letterhead at the top. There's no number at the bottom. It's right in front of page two.
Yeah. Thank you.
Got it.
The second paragraph is management's responsibility, which is the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. The third paragraph is auditor's responsibility, and that's to express an opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. The fourth paragraph is the audit procedures. The top of the next page, it states opinions. And our opinion is that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, which is an unqualified clean opinion. The next paragraph is an emphasis of matter. Within this last year, there was a GASB statement, number 84, that had to be implemented. So your fiduciary funds that you have had forever within your financial statements are still there. Nothing has changed operationally. However, there is a significant change as it relates to the presentation. So in the past, we had reflected those as amounts due to other entities. Some of that's related to settlements, some of that's related to accounting and administration that you do for other entities, such as, you know, Condo Water or McDermott GID specifically would be two items, but there's several more. So they significantly changed it to now we do almost like many financial statements for these other entities that aren't just settlement entities. So the city of Winnebago, Humboldt County School District, hospital, they're all settlement entities. So money comes in, is collected, and then it goes out as settlements. Those look relatively the same. However, these other entities, again, we have somewhat small financial statements on a cash basis that are presented. And so that has changed up some. I'm not going to lead you through that. I just wanted you to be aware of that, because when you look towards the end of your financial statements, you'll see that these pages go on forever and ever and ever and ever. It's because of the presentation that has changed. So that's, that was the impact, is really from a financial presentation standpoint. The next paragraph is required supplementary information. This describes what is required supplementary information and what our opinion is related to that. The bottom of the page is other information. And again, that identifies what that is, as well as our opinion related to it. However, it also alludes to several items related to the single audit, so it's quite expansive. You turn to the next page. At the bottom is other reporting requirements by governmental auditing standards. This is, again, something that's required by state statute, as well as the single audit, because you have greater than $750,000 in federal financial assistance with your grants. You turn to page four, which is the next page. This is management discussion and analysis. And there is, again, it's from a layman's perspective. It has a lot of really great content and good information. And it summarizes and provides, you know, different items of analysis. However, I'm going to take you right through the financial statements, so I'm going to have you turn to page 12. On page 12, it's the statement of net position. These are all assets and liabilities at one point in time, as of June 30th, 2021. It's full accrual, is similar to a commercial operation. So you have entities that do operate, such as a business, your enterprise funds, it's your, you know, television funds, your landfill, your general improvement districts, which would be sewer and water. So those all operate as a business. There's a little bit different reporting related to this disclosure under GASB 34, but for the most part, those are, remain intact. However, your governmental funds do not operate as a business. They're current. So you see revenue coming in, expenditures going out, but you don't, and you have capital outlay, you don't have fixed assets. So there's a different presentation. So this changes the presentation so that it's reported more as a business for those governmental funds. And I'll kind of lead you through this. There's a lot going on here, because again, there's a lot that happened within the financials of Humboldt County this past fiscal year. At the top is cash, that increased by approximately $6 million over the previous year. The second item is taxes receivable, that increased by approximately $130,000. And that's mostly related to the settlement related to Nevada Gold Mines that was brought in and reported subsequent to year end. Towards the mid-page is intergovernmental receivable, that increased by approximately Further down are your capital assets. The construction in progress that's listed decreased by approximately $4.6 million. That's mostly related to the CSI project. However, your other capital assets net of depreciation increased by approximately $8 million. Again, most of that was related to the CSI project. Some of that's related to Star City and bringing Star City on. About mid-page is deferred outflows of resources. These are total deferred outflows related to pension and post-employment related benefits, which is your health insurance, that increased by approximately $400,000. About 75% down the page is a line item called unearned revenue. This item increased significantly. It's increased by approximately $2 million. And the reason for that is primarily related to grants. That deferral increased by approximately $1.8 million. And what happens here is it's not recognized within the financial statements as revenue in this particular year, because something hasn't happened. So what hasn't happened is there hasn't been expenditures related to these particular grants to allow you to recognize the revenue. So once the expenditure takes place and that's triggered, then it releases to revenue. So this will become revenue in the future, this $2 million. So 1.85 million is grants of that, 1.6 million is the ARPA funds, that I think you're very well aware of. Additionally, there was excess proceeds related to a tax sale of approximately $390,000. So until a year lapses, and you have individuals claim against that, that is not recognized as revenue. Any claims that take place will reduce that amount from a revenue standpoint. Anything that is not claimed and approved will then become revenue this next, well, during this current fiscal year. I think it's April that that'll take place. So there'll be recognition of revenue potentially related to those excess proceeds. And then, as I indicated, Nevada Gold Mines, that settlement that came into play here, that's also a deferred revenue of approximately $160,000. That will become revenue for fiscal year end 2022, even though it was received. Problem is, it was received after 60 days after year end. Lot of rules, so. But again, I just wanted you to be aware of, there's approximately $2.3 million that's been captured and not recognized as revenue, but that will be happening over this next fiscal year, for sure. Some of it, majority of it, probably. Further down the page is your liabilities related to bonds and capital leases. The capital leases decreased by approximately $85,000 from a current standpoint, and approximately $160,000 from a long-term standpoint. They just weren't replaced as they had been in the previous years, so that accounts for the decrease. So there weren't any acquisitions of capital leases as of June 30th, 2021. However, there was significant payments that took place against those capital leases. And that's the fleet process that you had put into place a few years back. Just below that is net pension liability, that increased by $550,000. You turn to page 13. At the top is deferred inflows related to pension and OPEB. Pension decreased by approximately $400,000. OPEB increased by approximately $300,000. Down at the bottom of this page, or I guess it's mid-page, but there's an item called unrestricted, and you'll see on the governmental activities column, it's negative. That occurs for a couple reasons. One, you have net investment of capital assets that is reflected, and that's all your fixed assets less depreciation. Additionally, there's items that are restricted, and that's in these particular governmental funds that you have. Part of it's indigent medical, county, city roads projects, so that's all restricted. So that's utilized within your special revenue funds, and it doesn't cross over into any other governmental funds, specifically probably the general fund. So that has a negative amount, but you also have to bear in mind that between pension and OPEB, that liability between the inflows, outflows, and the actual liability itself is $31.5 million in a liability. So without that, you would have $26 million positive number there. But because we're required to disclose that as a potential liability, that does have an impact on Humboldt County. If you can turn to page 14 and 15. This is the statement of activities. Again, this is from a commercial operations standpoint. On the left-hand side, page 14, under the totals, total primary government, the right two columns on that particular page, that, you know, that's double underlined, that's your operating grants and contributions and your capital grants and contributions. I just wanted to kind of bring your eye to that. Again, as indicated, there was a large deferred revenue related to your ARPA. However, there was quite a bit of revenue that was recognized related to federal financial assistance, and most of that is your coronavirus funds. So there's almost $4.5 million that was received between federal and state grants. That was an increase of approximately $2.2 million over the previous year. On the right-hand page, page 15, if you, if you go straight across the page, you'll see that there's a loss for governmental activities. That remained about the same as the previous year. And as we've discussed before, governments do run at a loss as it relates to direct revenues. However, you have general revenues that come into play that are in addition to, such as your consolidated taxes and your property taxes that lend to help with that particular deficit. So just below that, property taxes increased by approximately $1.7 million over the previous year. Four lines further down, motor vehicle fuel tax, that increased by approximately $1 million, which is mostly related to the diesel tax increase or bringing that on. The unrestricted investment earnings decreased by approximately $600,000 over the previous year. And if you go down to the change in net position, that increased by approximately $2.3 million. So here we are, two years into a pandemic, or I guess a year and a half in at that point, and Humboldt County survived quite well from a financial standpoint, with being able to increase $2.3 million to your change in net position. You turn to page 19, 19 and 20. This is the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance for governmental funds. I'm going to just go through just a few items here. Within the general fund, the net change in fund balance increased by approximately $500,000 over the previous year to a change of approximately $1.35 million. Your fund balance at the end of the year was 17.8 million, which is about 75% of what your expenditures are. So that's a quite healthy position to be in. Road Fund is the second column. That net change in fund balance was approximately $500,000 to the positive. However, there was a $1.6 million transfer in related to in lieu of tax that assisted that fund to remain healthy. Third column is regional transportation. As I indicated before, diesel tax increased, well, it increased about $775,000, but it was primarily the largest part of the increase for revenues for regional transportation. Further down, total expenditures, they decreased by approximately $600,000 over the previous year. So the net change of $1.8 million is attributed to both of those items. On page 20, on the right-hand side, the column labeled in lieu of tax. That net change in fund balance was a decrease of approximately $680,000, which leaves a remaining fund balance of approximately $300,000, which is significantly less than what has been in the past. In the past, there used to be about two years of in lieu that was remaining within that fund balance, but because of the need for certain transfers, that has really reduced the level of the in lieu of tax fund. You turn to page 23. This is the proprietary funds, actually the major proprietary funds, with a column for other enterprise funds for the smaller items. It's the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position. About mid-page, it reflects the operating income and loss for each of these particular funds. You know, somewhat the same as what we discussed with McDermott GID. There are losses within these particular enterprise funds. They're supposed to be self-sustaining. The fees that are charged are supposed to be self-sustaining so that there doesn't need to be any sort of transfers or the governmental entity outside of these entities to come in and add to them. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Humboldt Television had a loss of $18,000, even though it has a healthy ending fund balance. Solid Waste continues to be one that continues to have profitability. And as of June 30th, 2021, that operating income was approximately $340,000. McDermott Sewer had a loss of approximately $16,000, and Star City had a loss of approximately $88,000. And within that column for Star City, going further down the page, there again was a loan that was provided by the state, and that was forgiven, because as you probably recall, Star City had a loan of $575,000 that needed to be repaid. So this grant then assisted with Humboldt County then repaying that particular loan so that there is no debt. Further down the item, the page, there's a special item. It's capital contributions. So with the assessment of what the fixed asset valuation was, less the cash that was received, there was a capital contribution effectively in fixed assets of $2.8 million from the Star City nonprofit to Humboldt County. But that's with you taking over that particular entity. And the fifth column is other enterprises, other enterprise funds. And again, there's a loss of approximately $87,000 within all of those funds. And there's also the grants that were reflected within McDermott GID of approximately $585,000 that assisted with capital acquisitions. That, I'm turning it over to Tara to go through the graphs.
Okay. Everybody should have graphs. I think, I think everybody got a little spiral down guide.
If you don't, you can get more.
Got it. Okay. So we're going to flip a couple of pages in. Exhibit one, and a lot of what I say is, Andre probably already said it, we're going to look at it again with pretty colors. This first one's a comparison of ending cash balances, and it does include the fiduciary So as Andre already said, the cash for the county went up about $6 million from prior year, and that's excluding the fiduciary amounts. We don't include that because it's not really your money, you're holding it for somebody else, lots of somebody else's. Turn to the page, the next page, exhibit two. And this is comparison of ending fund balances for the governmental funds. So the proprietary funds, enterprise funds that Andre just talked about are not included here. There was an overall increase of about 3.3 million, and... There was an overall increase of about 3.3 million, and from, we're starting to see a little bit of a recovery here. 2017 to 2019, the fund balance was decreasing, total fund balance was decreasing about 2.2 million each year. There was a slight increase as of the end of 2020, and then there was another increase as of the end of 2021. So that is a positive change there. The next page is revenue by source, and again, all governmental fund types. And the total revenue is up about 4.1 million over the prior year. The makeup is basically the same as in the past, no major changes. The next page is comparison of revenue by source, again, for all governmental fund types. It's just a different, it's an annual comparison view of the data in the prior page. Intergovernmental revenue increased by about 2.7 million, and this was due to increases in grants and fuel taxes, as Andre explained, and property taxes increased by about 1.5 million in these governmental funds. The next page is expenditures by function for the governmental fund types. Again, the makeup is pretty consistent with prior years. One of the most notable changes would be an $800,000 increase in community support, and that was due mostly to the COVID relief fund, or all the coronavirus funding, I suppose, and those expenditures, and then supporting the community through those other grants. The next page is comparison of expenditures by function for all governmental fund types. Again, this is a annual comparison of the data that was actually on the prior page. The overall increase, there was an overall increase of about $500,000 resulting from increases in community support for spending and passing through those grants. And there were actually a couple of decreases in the judicial public safety and public works function when compared to the prior year. Exhibit seven on the next page is revenue by source, and we've switched here, we're not on the governmental funds anymore. This is just for the general fund. So we'll see a lot of the same trends, but this is just specifically for the general fund. There were some slight shifts here, again, just due to the intergovernmental revenue increases that we saw. The next page is expenditures by function, and this is for the general fund. And again, mostly consistent with prior years, with the slight shift for community support for those coronavirus relief funds being passed through. Exhibit nine is a comparison of revenue expenditures for the general fund. The graph shows the revenue and expense trends for the general fund for the last five years, and the green bar at the bottom shows the excess, we hope it to show excess, of revenues over expenses. And you can see it was negative for the 2017, 18, and pretty much broke even for 19. And then, once we get to 20 and 21 fiscal years, we're showing a positive green bar, again, positive change. That means your revenues exceeded your expenses, so that's what we want to see there. Exhibit 10 is comparison of ending fund balance for the general fund for the past five years. And this is actually the third, June 30, 2021 is the third year in a row of increases in the general fund's ending fund balance. Exhibit 11 is revenue by source for the special revenue funds. And again, makeup here is similar to prior years with that same shift in intergovernmental revenue and taxes that we mentioned before. Exhibit 12 is expenditures by function for the special revenue funds, and we see that same slight increase. There was a slight increase in general government, and then those decreases in judicial and public works functions. And the last one is exhibit 13, comparison of revenues and expenses. This is for the proprietary funds. And this is what Andre was talking about as far as those funds should be self-sustaining, that would be desirable at least. So what we're seeing, as we've seen in the past, is Humboldt, or the landfill fund is sort of carrying these other funds. So we see positive things here. We have that nice green bar showing that the revenues exceeded the expenses, and that's great. But if you look at the details for those individual enterprise funds, a lot of them are not taking care of themselves, basically. So the positive you see here is basically coming out of the landfill fund. That's all I have there. Any questions?
I do have one question on the landfill fund. So there's supposed to be an amount of money that's being set aside for the closure of landfill. Is that under insurance still, or?
Yes, yes. Every year, we ensure that you still have the policy in place, and we did that again. So that policy is in place for the post-closure.
Is that increasing or decreasing per year, or about the same?
Yeah, it's been about the same. I mean, there's been some small increases over the years. A couple of years it was level, but it has increased.
Is this Commissioner Hill, is that an insurance policy that we buy, or do we actually put money like in as a bond? Are we bonding that, or are we just buying?
Paying a premium.
Yeah, we're paying a premium for that through pool pack. We do that.
I'm going to take you to page 38 within the financial statements. At page 38, it's note two. We had two items that were in non-compliance of Nevada revised statute. The first item is related to the 911 enhancement fund. Actual expenditures of the public safety function exceeded appropriations by approximately $35,000. But that was the only item of budget violation, if you will, that we did note. The next item is related to the minutes that we have discussed in the past, is getting those all caught up, which I know that there's progress being made on current year minutes, so that's great. So we're hoping soon that we won't be having this within the financial statements. If you turn to page 89 and 90. This is a combining statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the non-major special revenue funds. At page 89, the first column is cooperative extension. Again, I just want to bring your attention to the net change in fund balance towards the bottom of the page. For cooperative extension, it was an $87,000 loss. However, that fund still does remain quite healthy with approximately $1.1 million ending fund balance. The second column is a library fund, and taxes increased related to that particular fund in order to assist it to remain healthy. However, when you look at your net change in fund balance, there was a loss of approximately Ending fund balance is at $775,000. So with that continuing trend, you know, in three to four years, library may need some additional assistance in order to continue as a fund. If you can turn to page 159.
159?
159. So that's the final information I'm going to provide on the financial piece to it. We're actually going to the items related to compliance. So as I indicated, there was a single audit. There was approximately $4 million in federal financial assistance, which is far greater than $750,000. So with that, we have to do two types of reporting, one related to internal control. So if we see internal control deficiencies, we're required to report them, regardless of whether they're grant-related or not. And then additionally, we also have a non-compliance report that we have to provide if we find any sort of non-compliance related to grants, grant agreements, contracts, anything that comes to our attention. So at page 159, are two significant deficiencies. The first item is related to timely remittance of restitution payments. So what occurs is restitution is received by Humboldt County, and then Humboldt County has the requirement to then process those remittances and distribute those funds onto the victim. What's occurred is there's, the control system is not working within that to timely and accurately remit those to the victims by the district attorney's office. So that was something that we had to disclose. Additionally, there's a response related to that, you know, stating that, you know, they are working on the internal controls and supervisory review to get this corrected. The other significant deficiency is related to grants, and we had a deficiency in the previous year. And although it's a deficiency, we do want to state that, you know, there has been vast improvements that have taken place within that. With the $4 million in grants that were received and the additional ARPA funds that are kind of sitting in the wings, without having Rochelle onboard, I don't know how Humboldt County would have managed getting through all the compliance requirements and the grant accountability this last year. There just was a lot that started the previous year, but it just, it continued. And granted, there's several departments that are involved as well, and they do a great job, but there was a lot to wrap our arms around this past year related to those grants. But there's still kind of some missing controls that we are working with Rochelle to enhance and, you know, kind of get this ironclad to where we don't have any sort of issues going Any questions related to either of those?
Yeah, Andre, this is Commissioner French. With regard to the significant deficiency, the first one, we have a 30-day window by which we have to provide, my understanding, provide remedy to that deficiency, correct?
Correct.
And is there, along with that remedy, is there, are there outstanding balances that need to be remitted still? Is there still, you know, I know that, you know, you mentioned a timely distribution of the money. And what is, is that still a, you know, is there still outstanding vouchers to be processed?
Two weeks ago, I met with our DA, Michael McDonald, as well as Nancy Gerard in the office, and they had indicated that they were coming through these files, because you have to get back to the court order related to the restitution to ensure that it's done accurately. And so they're going back in time related to these remittances and then trying to determine what court orders to ensure that it's going to the appropriate victim. And at that time, I was told that it was, you know, soon to be cleaned up, but we could possibly have.
No, and we are, there are funds that we are trying to reconcile, as Mrs. Rose indicated, with case files. And so those items, as we reconcile, will be vouched for remittance to the appropriate person.
So that, you know, if that is, I just, I'm just concerned that we've got outstanding, we've got outstanding requests for vouchers that we haven't vouched yet, and I want to make sure that when that question, I'm asked that question, I can answer it accurately. But maybe that's something we take up at a different time, I don't know. But I just, I know with regard to this finding, we've got to do something with it. This, we've got to figure out what we're going to do.
No, there's been, not only reconciling these older balances, but there's been a change as it relates to the ongoing or current. The state has taken back over on the gross misdemeanor felony cases. We were the only jurisdiction where the state was not handling those matters for whatever reason, and had been like that for many years. But state parole probation took that back over as far as the collection on those. And then we've also made some changes as it relates to restitution in justice court too for ongoing. So we're cleaning up the, some of the past accounts that are currently outstanding.
So my understanding is then we're, we've got a system in play, not right now, for everything that's this time, this point forward?
And cleaning up, and cleaning up the past correct.
So what we're dealing with right now then is, is the outstanding files.
Correct, and we're going back and looking at the old orders, identifying or the, confirming the victims and addresses, so we can cut those distributions.
So is that something that, and I'm only asking this because I'm stupid enough that I don't understand how this moves, but is this something that the county can provide assistance? I know you're, you're under the gun as far as the people you've got in your workload and whatnot, and it appears to me that that's part of the problem here. And I'm wondering is, is, can our comptroller assist?
To some extent, but as far as actually looking at our files, we're limited because of some of the criminal histories and other information that's in, that's contained in those files. But comptroller's graciously offered, and when we get to some of those items where verified the information, we will be working with comptroller.
Okay. So the 30-day report back to the state taxation that we have to provide, is that, is that provided, and I should know this question, answer this question, is that report provided back to this board, or is, how's that, okay?
Yeah. So what should happen, and I'm going to get with Nancy and Michael again in relation to this, is that they will need to further enhance their corrective action plan to be incorporated within that, and that will have to come in front of the board, because the board has to approve that prior to it being sent to the state, and it has to be sent to the state within 30 days.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure we were on board for that, because that's, that is.
It's important.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah, yeah. Because the state wants to ensure that these items don't occur again. So they're looking for some sort of response that has some teeth in it.
Yeah. Rightfully so. Any additional questions? Okay.
Okay. So with that, then I'll take you to the final communication, which is this other letter.
Yep.
It has Humboldt County at the top. Again, this is a required communication. The first item is our responsibility in relation to the financial statement audit. And that was expressed within our engagement letter. And our responsibility is to perform the audit. Management's responsibility is, you know, to actually be responsible for the financial statements. We are also responsible for communicating significant matters of those we've just discussed related to the significant deficiencies. And this points to the different reports that are within the financial statements for that. If you turn to page two, it's the plan, scope, and timing of the audit. As indicated, there were substantial items that came after year-end that have kind of extended the scope of the audit. But we're here today to present everything and have recorded everything back to June 30th, as is required, related to those subsequent events. The next item is compliance with all ethical requirements regarding independence. As indicated, we do prepare the financial statements, but we have safeguards in place with a secondary review to ensure independence with reporting of the financial statements. Additionally, Humboldt County does take responsibility for those financial statements. Gina does a thorough review of those financials as well. The next item is significant accounting policies. Those policies are reflected in page, within note one. And additionally, we had that one change related to GASB 84, and that has been disclosed within your audit opinion as well as within the financial statements. Further down is significant accounting estimates. The estimates that are provided are depreciation as well as post-employment benefits related to deferred inflation. to deferred inflows and outflows, pension liability and related to first inflows and outflows. We receive an actuarial report related to pension as well as OPEB in order to assist with those, the reflection of that within the financial statements and based upon their If you turn to page three, at the top is financial statement disclosures. The most significant are related to OPEB and pension liabilities. Next is identified or suspected fraud, of which there are none. Following item is significant difficulties encountered during the audit. There was no significant difficulties at all related to management. There were some immaterial, uncorrected items that you assess from a cost versus benefit standpoint, but again, they are minor and immaterial, and those are attached to this particular report if you wanted to see what those are. There's also different adjustments that we do propose. All of those adjustments have been corrected and have been included within the financial statements. At the bottom, in relation to disagreements with management, there were no disagreements that arose during the course of the audit. On the last page, we do have a representation letter that we do receive stating that you have fully disclosed everything to us, either verbally or through documents, and we have already received that particular signed letter. Following that is management's consultation with other accountants, of which we are aware of none. Other significant matters, findings, or issues. None of the matters resulted in a condition of retention for us to perform the audit. The last item is related to non-compliance with laws and regulations, and that is presented in note two. And as we indicated, there was those two items related to Nevada revised statute. Again, I'd like to thank the commission and all the departments in allowing us to prepare the audit and assisting us with everything that's involved with getting here this day. So we appreciate it greatly. And we're always available anytime for any questions or comments or any sort of discussions related to Humboldt County and its finances.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you again. It's a, this is a difficult, confusing information for laypeople to digest, and you make it easier for us.
Great.
By presenting it the way you do, and you've always been available for us to answer questions. We appreciate it, and we always have, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like the way the breakout is of the enterprise funds.
Yep.
This year.
Yeah. No, I think that's important to stay at the forefront, especially since they're supposed to be self-sustaining. You know, they, they definitely operate on margins.
Yeah. I think that's definitely a place we're going to have to visit. They've got to be self-sustaining.
Yeah.
We knew that there was going to be an issue, especially with the sewer district and, and those water districts depending, just based on the maintenance that was in front of us.
Right.
And we knew we were going to have to come up with something, so this just confirms that.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I just want to make a comment. I want to thank Drake Rosen Associates. You know, part of this deal was when we engage with them, is there a local company, local people that are engaged in our operation, really 24/7, around the clock, all year long. And, and I also like to thank Gina. She puts in amazing amount of hours. I see her late at night here, really year-round, but especially during this process, when it starts in that August, September timeframe. So thanks, Gina.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to thank you for presentation of the audit, but I would like to make a motion that we accept the audit for Humboldt County, Nevada, from Drake Rosen Association as presented.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, and we have discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Ladies.
Mr. Chair, we'll go to 17 is the next item.
Dave, we also have Mr. Pearson here.
Let's take a few minutes, let's take a few minutes then, and we'll introduce ourselves.
Come on up.
Mr. Chair, if I may, prior to the last item, this gentleman, Mr. Dean Pearson, approached me. He is, I guess, one of the, if not the primary or only principals of the ARJ Properties LLC. And he, I indicated to him that John Milton by, or of the Desert Mountain Surveying had represented that Mr. Pearson was traveling, may have succumbed to some poor traffic conditions, and, and he, he wanted to see if there were any additional questions or anything that this board may have. And so this, this went back to the item, I don't, trying to find, it was, was 11 F and G.
Right, it was the master plan amendment and the zoning change, the last two items.
Yeah, RH 21.
With respect to Rose Creek.